Yes.
Testing one, two.
But I'm saying, sir, I'm saying to you, sir, we want to use other services amongst yourselves, but we say give us some free minutes because I'm communicating so that you don't say...
Maluweini.
So, we are starting now.
Eh, siyakala ngoku.
So, we have requested one of our staff members to translate in Tosa.
Eh, siyakala.
We don't have somebody translating in Africans. So, we are going to ask amongst yourselves who can understand English and be able to translate in Africans to come and help us.
So, because of his car.
Come. Thank you very much. The problem is solved.
Okay, siyakala manje, because of his car. So, uche pese ni utele umuntu ogwazi o us understand that is Tosa, nesizulu. Abantu abasu translator, abasu figure, eh, baba translator. Mndangsoza amruting translator i Englishi gi gi sestroseni o esizulu.
Translator pella, um, madam, Africans, yes. Translate what we're saying.
Which one?
Um, I'm saying, Sesi, I'm saying that we are requesting you to assist us in translating Africans. So, I want you to translate it to the people.
From English to Africans.
Yeah.
Hello. Guehemore amla. Ik gaan Afrikaans, ik ga ni Ingels translate na Afrikaans tu. Okay?
So, now we are going to start with our meeting and we want to thank Uma Amma for volunteering to to translate for the sake of better communication for all of us.
Manje, sizo kala imi 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 meetingi, sifuna ukbonga Uma Amma ogu cha volunteer, ogu cha su translate.
Unshadno onprat in Africans. Unshadno bachen miti vergaderen.
I'm going to request that we rise, all of us men remove their head and then ask the the sound people to lead us in singing the national anthem.
Ngifale ogu tis sugu mesonge amatota akumule i kogo kona i abantu besan vijini basli te i national anthem.
Unshadno amalstan in anhan os to the national anthem song.
Can we request all men to remove their head? All men to remove their head.
Wonge amatota akumule isikogo.
Kan aldi mans minsela ude afalase blif?
Can you, the sound people help us with the national singing of the national anthem?
(Singing) South Africa, my paradise, you know. Israel, we are yours. Oh, see, see, we are China. You see, you know. We are the world, we are Jesus. We are the children of the Lord. Oh, see, you know. Oh, see, you know. See, Jesus. See, Jesus, South Africa. South Africa. And you shall find no sin. And you shall find no sin. Who will see the earth and land by the cross of our feet? South of God, to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live as one. In South Africa, I am.
Thank you very much. Um, we are members of the Portfolio Committee on Human Settlements. We are members of Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Siyabonga kakulu, siye Portfolio Committee yagwa Human Settlements singa malunga eh, ali ali committee asuke Parliament.
Unshadno shani Parliament in ososwani committee badmense rikte tun.
Amongst the team that is here, we have the support staff of Parliament. I'm going to ask them to rise, to take a bow, so that you can see them.
Abani abetu abahaba nati i timu, i technical team esuke Parliamente, ngizwe ifale ogu tis sugu umu e bulisi.
Unshadno funsespan fra om tesan in fela teweisa sosale name rub.
Um, I'm the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Human Settlements. My name is Machwe Nirozina Semenia.
Ngiyu uslano we Portfolio Committee yagwa Human Settlements. Ika malami urozina Semenia.
Ikasi Rozina in ikasi wefani committee.
Um, I've with members of the Portfolio Committee. On my right hand side, we have Honorable Powell.
Ngihamba nama member eh, eh committee egas eesali nsamsogula nginu Honorable Powell.
And then we have Honorable Tseki.
Maseguba nu Honorable Tseki losen osen bulisi.
And then we have Honorable Nenshi Sishuai.
Maseguba u nu Honorable Nenshi Sishuai.
Tani born. Nijan.
And then we have on, in my left hand side, we have Honorable Tafeni.
And then eesali nsokmwele ku nu Honorable Tafeni.
All ready? Nijan.
We are here as members of Parliament of the Republic of South Africa to come and solicit your views on the bill that has been publicized by Parliament called the Housing Consumer Protection Bill.
Sise laana uko zochola imi bono ye nu ngale pilele ekchiwa eh, i pileyo, i protector abantu, i mayla nane zilu.
Ososiremi wetsunwerbe twaspiriak en verband miti beskerben for behayising verbreakers.
Before Parliament can hold public hearings, we send teams from Parliament to come and discuss the bill or conscientize communities on the bill. So, I just want to check in this house how many of you have attended those meetings or workshops that were conscientizing on the bill.
Ngapambi ogu tis sise sense i public hearing. Sikes tumele abantu ogu tibasofundisa mayla nenepile. Bengkele ukbona ogu tchoba ni aba aba abagazi lukpumelela ogu tibas baeglu gugulugule o eh, public education.
Ta'ras um, verzoek um vergaderungsteet fuhu uns van dag hegekomet nuswagrah wiet. Hufi omense was tiyofan vergaderungsforti forti van dag.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that some of you in the hall were able to attend um, the workshops. Um, as we are going to interact with yourself, you'll be interacting based on the education that you have received.
Eh, siyabonga kakulu ogu tine wazile ogu ya kile public education. So, uma seses tetanani sizo uwas ogu tine sikulu mngoba sifalesene i atendile i public education.
Unshadno teyede kila gekomet um yedu vergaderung payte wuen in uswep that kila chantie wiesfandet.
And we want to again formally because now the meeting is open to apologize on behalf of Parliament for that technical glitch that we have on the translators.
Joba isi vuliwe intangano sifuna olisa kakulu ngipucha elenze gile taleni ogu tine eh, amatransitasanga fi.
Unshadno wir ins as Parliament, as Parliament, um, balus wir ins um verskuunangfra dat unsetzulat beginet as gefolg van dimense wat mus translate it.
Um, we are going to summarize the bill so that those that have not managed to attend the workshop, they can actually um, have some knowledge of what we are talking about.
Sizo, sizo, sizo is summarize zagele pile ogu tis sense ogu tis siyakomotechina abantu abangazange ogu tibagwas ogu ya, wi wi public education.
Unshadno wier eh, klein opsumang tun for dimense wat ni di ane vergaderungsdeel bayge wunet ni in ushadno wier ori beskerben for behayising prat.
The Housing Consumer Protection Bill as indicated is the bill that was tabled in Parliament and is called the Housing Consumer Protection Bill 2021, which seeks to repeal the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998.
So, lomteeto lo es kulumanga o umteeto ozama ogu, ogu eh, ogu eda umteeto o o u kona go 1998 o o zo bo umte lo umteeto o 2021.
Di wetsunwerb op beskerben for behayising verbreakers 2021. Di wetsunwerb het ten tool um di wete beskerbens materials for behayising verbreakers 1998. Wet number 95 van 1998 te heru.
The Act come to in, the the Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998 came into effect on the 4th of June 1999 and has, has been amended at least three times by the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Amendment Act of 1999 and the Housing Amendment Act of 2000 um, and the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 2007 respectively. The Department of Human Settlements and the National Home Builders Registration Council have since identified certain challenges with the key provisions of the Act which impacts negatively on the efficient execution of the Council's mandate as requiring review.
So, lomteeto lo u, ubone ogu tis eh, gunezinkenga eh, before ekatezi afekta i implementation ya yo, we can say lektiwa NHPRC. So, lomteeto lo na ozama ogu tis u, 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 uwenze kan ngono lomteeto wongo 1999.
Ti weta dopir juni nierhanti nierhenyentige in werkingentreya. En is minstens dri keer deer onderscheidlik di weisigingswet op beskerbensmaterials for behayising, behayising verbreakers 1999. Wet number 27 van 1999. Di behayisingswet 2001, wet number 4 van 2001. And di weisigingswet op beskerbensmaterials for behayising verbreakers 2007, wet number 17 van 2007 gewaisig. Di Department van Menselijke Nederzettings in the National Home Bowers Registration Raad het sederdins sekere uitdagings met betrekking tot kernbepalings van die wet wat een negative uitwerking op die doeltreffende uitvoering van die raadsmandat het geidentificier wat der sinung vereis.
The Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effective regulation of the home building industry by inter alia strengthening the regulatory mechanisms, strengthening the protection of housing consumers, introducing effective enforcement mechanisms and prescribing appropriate penalty or sanctions to deter noncompliance by home builders.
Lomteeto lo na ufuna ogu tis unagegele abantu abasu, abantu ama beneficiares ezinzu and then uintroduse ama systems ogu tis eh, labo bandu labo ba projector anjan.
Meti tool eti wetsunwerb ten tool um foltuna beskerben van behayising verbreakers in doeltreffende regulering van de heisbaubetrijf te verseker deer onder meer die regulierende mechanismus te versterk, di beskerben van behayising verbreakers te versterk, doeltreffende afdoongs mechanismus intesdel and topasslike strafmaterials of sanctions voortesgref om heisbauers van nina kooming te weerhaal.
In addition, the bill seeks to address the economic transformation of the industry through the introduction of the provision relating to the warranty fund surplus which may be utilized towards developmental programs for the home building industry.
Lomteeto ngoko kubeda ufuna ogu tis u, 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 ogu tis u, 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 shufume ise indaba ze, ze ekonomi ngowentrodusa indektiwa i warranty fund.
Ta'binewens eti wetsunwerb ten tool um di ekonomische omvorming van die verbrijf, die bedrijf te tackle deer de instelling van voorzienings wat verbandhaal met die waarborgfondcirkles wat angewinkan word voor ontwiklungsprogramme for de heisbaubetrijf.
The bill seeks to create an enabling environment for new entrants into the home building industry through the introduction of contractual provision that ensures sustainability in the market.
Lomteeto ufuna ogu tis akubuzele abantu abasha abafunugungena kile industrie yogo akazeinzu.
Di wetsunwerb het ten tool um a bemachtende umgeving te skipper niwe toetredes to di heisbaubetrijf deer de instelling van contractuele bepalings wat al voorbehoudbaarheid in die markt verseker. Di wetsunwerb is voort van tool um ander terzaklike stike wedgieving sois di wet op Openbare Finanzielle Bestuur 1999, wet nume 1 van 1999, and di wet op die bevordering van administrative gerechtigheid 2000, wet nume 2 van 2000 in o, in oorien stemming te bring in synergy mee te skip.
The bill further seeks to align and create synergies, synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation such as the Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000.
Lomteeto ufuna fuchi uguens ogu tis ihambiselanen eminye imteeto yaga hulume efanane eh, PFMA which is the Public Finance Management Act and ama eminye imteeto fuchi ekfanele ihambisani nae.
Huwstekien van di wetsunwerb handu ur di umskreivings, tupassan van di wet in tupassan van di wet op open, openbare financielle bestuur op di raad.
Um, therefore, the summary of the provision of the bill are as follows. The chapter one of the bill deals with the definition, application of the Act and application of the Public Finance Management Act to the Council.
So, isamariye pile, itila anji u chapter one wai, u tira nama, nama definitionsi eh, eh, ama definitions.
Di wetsunwerb maak voorziening veronder meer di umskreiving van bou um di beskerben wat an behayising verbreakers gebied word oitebreid deer herstelwerk, opknappings, veranderinge in aanbouings an a bestaande huis krachtens di raadsregulerende stelsel intesleit.
The bill makes provision for inter alia the definition of the bill to expand the protection of afforded housing consumers by including repairs, renovation, alteration and additions to an existing home under the council regulatory regime.
So, it definitionsini ye ye pile is here, is here expanda remanje ogu tifage eznisinto esfana nogu tifamofune zama renovationzi eh, nasozonge ezinto leze esila neinzu.
Di wetsunwerb maak voorziening veronder meer di umskreiving van bou um di beskerben wat an behayising verbreakers gebied word oitebreid deer herstelwerk, opknappings, veranderinge in aanbouings an a bestaande huis krachtens di raadsregulerende stelsel intesleit.
Um, the scope of application of the legislation is extended to include only builders who undertake home builders, home building as a business but also owners builders. Owners builders are included in the definition of a home builder and are required to register with the council.
So, lele pile ifuna ogu tis ifage labantu abu aba aba abenza i constructioni ngipisnesi na labantu abu aba aba zaki, aba zakela, aba zakela bo na ezinzu.
Di tupassingsgebied van di wedgieving wordt uitgebreid um ni netbouers intesleit wat di bou van a huis as a bezigheid onderneemni maar ook eyenarbouers. Eyenarbouers word by di umskreiving van a heispauer ingesleid en moet by di raad registriere.
Um, the chapter two of the bill seeks to provide for the continuation of the council established in terms of section two of the Act as a due restrict persons to be known as the National Home Builders Regulatory Council. It further seeks to provide It further seeks to provide for the objectives of the council, governance structure of council.
So, u chapter two we pili, itkaza u gochi, i council ingakubega ganjani and then itkaza u gochine, i juristicini eh, ye council ingakanani and u gochi, i council i kaveno ganjani.
Huwstik... Huwstik twee van die wetsunwerp het ten tool om voorzinnig te maak voor die voorzetting van die raad, ingestal angevolge artikel twee van die wet as a rechtspersoon wat as the National House Bau Regulatie Rat bekend staan. Dat het voort ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor die oogmerke besteer en structuur van die raad.
Chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of home builders and developers, the establishment of the register of home builders, the requirement for registration, suspension of registration, grading of home builders and liabilities of un-registered home builders or developers.
U chapter three we pili, u kuluma kakulu, u go register, abantu abaka ezinzu, nama ilabantu abama developers. And then it dila u gochine, u gochine, if ufuna u go register, i pilendo falu yenze, u gochi register and if registration nia ko, benga itati, xwege wenzenjani. And u gochi also, u gochi, ifunge akor registerati, wenze galani gwen.
Huwstik drie van die wetsunwerp het ten tool om voorzinnig te maak voor die registratie van huisbouwers en ontwikelaars, die instelling van een register van huisbouwers, die vereisteris voor registratie, opschoorting van registratie, gradering van huisbouwers en aanspreekelheid van een ongerегистreerde huisbouwer of ontwikelaar.
The chapter four of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of a register of enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by home builders, consequences for failure to enroll a home, the duties in respect of a subsidy housing project and consequences of failure by the member of the executive council or the member of mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a social institution or a subsidy housing delivery agent to comply with the provision of the Act.
U chapter four, u dila, u gochi, fagwenze genjani before u register and u dila, u gochi, yini enze galayo, if faila u register and it dila, u gochi eh, nama consequences, u gochi, wenze galani, if ama members of executive council eh, ingakwazanga u register and also at dila, eh, 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 social housing institutions.
Chapter five.
Huwstik vier van die wetsunwerp het ten tool om voorzinnig te maak voor die instelling van een register van inskreibings, die umskreibing van een huis voor die aanfang van die bouw daarvan deer een huisbouwer, gevolge vir een versoom om een huis inteskrif, plakte ten opzichte van een subsidieeh behuisingsproject en die gevolge van een versoom deer een lid van een uitvoerende raad of een lid van die burgemeesterkomitee verantwoordelijk voor menselijke nederzetting, een maatschappelijke behuisingsinstelling of een subsidieeh behuisingsafleveringsagent om aan die bepalings van die wet te voortdoen.
Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funds in true monies appropriated by parliament as the council regulatory mandate is a public function and the establishment of non-profit company, management of funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, claims and limitations.
U chapter fiveige, wona uma elana neendaba ze mali, ze council ledes kulubenga i aktua i NHPRC en i provider for i, 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 i warranty fund en nama ni ama fundi a, 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 a etisinali tu i, 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 i mali eh, 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 ama public function. It also, it dila neyelendozan, nee mali, u gochine, ingakanani mali eh, eh, engagoo, eh, was u gochines kokel eh, we warranty fund.
Huwstik vijf van die wetsunwerp het ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor die fonse van die raad, die huiswaarborgfonds, bij komende bevonding deer gelde wat deer die parlement bewillig word aangesien die Raadsregulerende mandat een openbare functie is, die stichting van een nie wensgevende maatschappie, besteer van fonse, die gelde van die raad, aanfang en tier van die waarborg, die maximum en minimum bedrag betaalbaar uit die waarborgfonds is een beperking.
Chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of the services to a build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project from a home builder who is not registered with the council lies on a home that was not enrolled with the council in his tender submission who previously failed to rectify or complete the ratification of structural defect as directed by the council without a reasonable ground or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlements.
U chapter sixige wona, u dila, neendaba u gochi eh, abantu aba, abanga wazanga u gochi, ba registerne councila, ba dila ganjani nabu and also, it dila ney, neendaba zamateenda u gochi, in, in order u gochine, u tole itenda lana, fagwenze, fagwenze keganjani. And also, it dila, u gochi, if, if eh, if, if eh, feila, loomu, toloyo, u go disclose i, i information that is eating a guyo by u minister, wenze galani.
Huwstik zes van die wetsunwerp het ten doel om die verkrijging van die dienste van een huisbouwer wat nie bij die raad geregister is nie te verbied om een huis te bouw wat deel voor hem van een subsidieeh behuisingsproject. Wat staat maak op een huis wat nie bij die raad ingeschrei was in zijn tende pvorelegi nie. Wat voorin versoomit om die registelling van structurele vulte zoals deer die raad gelas, soende redelijke gronden, rechte stel of de vultoi. Of wat versoomit om enige inlichting bekend te maak wat deer die Minister van Menselijke Nederzetting die minister porgeschrei is.
Chapter seven of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted. It also seeks to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, the establishment and the powers of the compliance and enforcement committees, matters relating to administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalties relating to that too. The chapter further seeks to provide for alternative dispute resolution, criminal offenses and sanctions.
Lo, lo chapterage, we pili, u kuluma, u gochi, i pili, yenziwaga jani, u gochi eh, i enforce. And then, i akaza, u gochi, yini imsebenzi, ama inspectors. U gochi, amanja, a compliance and enforcement committee imaapi and i, it dila, nama issues of i administrationi and also it dila, nama, nama issues, u gochine, ifunga comply, i mi pi, i mi pi, i kubega le, ezegala yo, ifunga comply.
Huwstik siewe van die wetsunwerp het ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor die afdoonging van die bepalings van die wetsunwerp, zwa draad het verorden is. Dat het ook ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor die aanstelling en plakte van inspecteurs, die stichting en bevoegde van die nakomings en handhabingskomitee, aandgeleda wat verbandhau met administrative en wesendike nie naamkoming en strafmatseriels daarmee verbandhau. Die huwstik het further ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor alternatieve geskoolbesluiting, kriminiele oertredings en sanctions.
Chapter eight of the bill seeks to provide for the various matters including the home building manual, the making of the rules by the council and of regulations by the minister, the recovery of the fees, vicarious liabilities, the personal liabilities of the members, directors, trustees of the home builders, duties of the estate agency, financial institution, covent, conveniences, the code of conduct of the council members, the home builders, developers and other industry role players. This chapter also deals with transitional matters.
Lo, u chapter eight we pili, wona uma elana nee home building manual and imte eto, eh, elandewa i councili eh, 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 NHPRC and imte eto, eh, fagwe i, i minister and u gochi, am, i, ama fees o i, i mali lesi kokoa yo, zitola, zitola ganjani and also, ama, ama liabilitiesi, akutila ganjani nowo, ama liabilitiesi, ama membersi, nama directors, nama trustees of ama home buildersi, kutila ganjani and nogus patake we councila, ama, ama membersi councila, ama home buildersi, nama developersi and yonge industri, yoyo yogo akai iyo yonge.
Huwstik acht van die wetsunwerp het ten doel om voorzinnig te maak voor die verskye aangeleentede, insleiding de huisbouwhandleiding, die maak van reels deer die raad en van regulaties deer die minister, die verhaal van gelde, plaatsvervangende aanspreekelheid, die persoonlijke aanspreekelheid van die leden, directeren, trustees van een huisbouwer, plakte van eiendomsagenten, financiële instellings, actebezorgers, die gedragskoedes van raadsleden, huisbouwers, ontwikelaars en andere rolspelers in die bedrijf. Die huwstik handle ook word oergangs aangeleentede.
Oneconomic employment and infrastructure development as noted above, the bill seeks to provide the warranty fund surplus to be utilized towards transformative human settlement developmental programs which facilitate growth, skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry.
Mala na, ne zo hube, ne kaxa kabantu, nama logo, we infrastructure etinga galayo for i, i human settlements. I pili, i, i akaza, u gochi, i warranty fundi ingasati, ziswa ganjani, u gochi kuzele, ukshinja, weznpilo, zabantu, buseti, busetien, ziswa ama problemsi, agwa human settlements. U gochi kuniuswe, kuniuswe i, 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 i kula, we, we ekonomi, masabantu banigwa ama skills developmenti and also, u gochi, i, 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 ekonomi transformi through using i, i land, i, i industri agwa human settlements.
Economische indiensneming en infrastructuurontwikkeling heet die wetsunwerp ten doel om voorzinnig te maak dat die Waarborgfondoorschoot aangewend word voor hiskippende menselijke nederzettingsentwikkelingsprogramme wat groei, vaardighedsontwikkeling en economische omvorming in de huisbedrijf behartig.
The bill seeks to provide emerging home builders greater access and protection through equitable registration requirement, a grading system, the regulation of certain contractual matters and the continuous development and training and the proposed the proposed provision covering the contractual matters between home builders, developers and employers are meant to contribute towards the sustainability of the emerging home builders and the growth of the home building industry.
I pili akube egafu u gochi, izama u gochi, i, inige, inige ezele, nabantu aba, abama contractorsa, basakali. U gochi bagwaz, u gochine, ba ekse senayo, industry. U gochi, nabu ba empowerisho, u gochine, ba wazuk register and ba, ba, ba credit gaale. And then i akube egafu u gochi, kuluma ney, neendaba zo, zo, zamakontrati and i, i, neendaba u gochi, ba chuchungiswa ganjani bo na and ba trainwa ganjani.
Die wetsunwerp het ten doel om aan opkomende huisbouwers groter toegang en bescherming te bied deer middel van bilke registratie vereist is, een graderingsstelsel, die regulering van zekere contractuele aangeleed, aangeleentede en deerlopende ontwikkeling en opleiding. Die vorgestelde bepalings wat die contractuele aangeleda tussen huisbouwers, ontwikelaars en werkgevers tek is bedoel om bij die raad tot die volhouwbaarheid van opkomende huisbouwers in die groei van de huisbouwbedrijf.
Thank you very much. That was the summary of the bill from chapter one to chapter eight and what the bill seeks to achieve. And therefore, we are now going to allow yourselves to make inputs on the bill. We are here, as I've indicated, to solicit your views so that as we finalize the bill as parliament, we would have satisfied that this bill represents your aspiration and your wishes.
Siabonga kakulu gege, logo kategwe, isamariye pili, esuka ku chapter one, ise ifige ku chapter eight. Manje, indesu se itela knina, imbono ye, u gochi, ni na i pili ni bona ganjani. Yini lenifuna u gochi ifagwe, we pili and sinlale, sitchache u gochine, infunu u gochi.
So, die idee is dat daar een opsumming gege is nou van die, van die eh, die akte, die wet en dat jy de nou van huwstik één nou huwstik acht zal kan insete gehe, wordie die opsumming.
Maam, you're supposed to start by apologizing to these people. We've been taking a shot on your behalf when you are not here. So, can you apologize so that they can know that you have arrived, maam?
My sincerest apologies, my, my, first in English and then in Afrikaans. You want me to do it in both languages?
Okay, thank you very much.
My sincerest apology for arriving late. I only got the call from Zanzig Communications. I'm living in Stellenbosch at nine o'clock to be here. The address was incorrect. I had to stop at the South African Police Service to get the correct address and hence again, my sincerest apologies.
... through raising hands. As you raise hands, we're going to appoint you to come and sit on this chair. What do you do when you arrive there? You are going to give us your name, where you come from and whether you support or you reject the bill and eh...
Siabonga kakulu ge manje, seso nteela, u gochi eh, nize, ne zo kuluma, u gochi, nefuna, yini lenifuna u gochi ifagwe, we pili. Ngizon, ndela u gochi, npagamesizani. Ngizon, komba, u gochi ne, woza, uzelali, uzwotala pa pili, maso ufaga ombono wako.
Our intention is to get you, all of you, to speak.
Sorry, maes.
So, was kan, imega, jahaniaan topsteek kasi, jahaniaan dai of i ri wet anfa en of i ri wet verwerp? Jy kan e plek neem, jy kan see waar jy vandankom, i naamstel en e plek e neem, soos wat i, i handopsteek zal i appriert kry om te praat.
As I've indicated, you indicate your name, where you come from, whether you support the bill or you reject the bill and all of us, because our intention is to get you, all of you who wants to speak to have time to make inputs. We are going to give you three minutes each. That is the rule that we have been applying throughout the provinces.
Jago ba ngxiloge, u gochi, senzo trelu, u gochi, ne sugume, ne zelana, ne zo shuku, u gochi. I pili le, we are supporter, nama au isaput. Lo katet, into katet sen zile, na gua manje, ama provinces.
So, so the greats ke said, jy kan i naam, handopsteek, jy kan see i naam nuum, jy kan see waar jy vandankom en of i ri wetsunwerp anfa of verwerp. Jy kry drie miniete om i zaak te stel en dit is die reel rech wordie jille provincie soos deer ons opgestel.
As you, as you do that, we are going to prioritize people with disability. We want to apologize that one of the person who was supposed to be here was supposed to dilute sign language. was supposed to dilute sign language is not here. Okon, oh okon, oh you have been doing the job. We are just arriving. Yeah, we have a person who's dealing with sign language. Those that cannot hear us as we communicate, they are going to they are going to get helped for them to make their input. So we are going to prioritize the disability people first and then we'll come back to you. And we want to apologize that we have to start with them. Can we have any disability person who want to speak to come here?
Enige mensen met gestremd here, kan die is able voor hun te kom, ons het is gebaartal tolken i voorkant?
The one that wants to speak about the bill?
Enige iemand wat oor die wetsunwerpel praat, wat gestremd here het?
Nobody. Let's, okay, are you disabled?
I'm here, I don't know if you heard it. I'm here on behalf of my brother-in-law, he's deaf. He's not here, but I'm speaking on his behalf.
Okay, but you can walk, you can hear, you can have time to sit with us. No, no, you'll have to raise your hands. Raise your hands will recognize you, number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, sisuwa, number six, number seven, mama wa white shirt, yes? Number, how many are there? One, two, three, four, five? One, two, three, four, five, six? Number seven, number eight, number nine ma? Number ten, the guy with the blue hat? Will get the second round. A three-minute rule. Say your name and what you, and then your input. And then those that have submissions, like those that represent organization and maybe association, you have actually have a long list of issues. Just in three minutes summarize it and then your input, you can submit it there.
Also, ni nega ge imizu, zu emi tatu ba umtu afakali se ulu followa ke kule bili. Ubake mtsambo nenjozi ni, nzo funu sietos ba lepanzi. Snawa makosa se parlamenta paeta fili, nuba unekue po dunalo. Tsambo melo umbu utotiile, unale lungo lolo bake u kritiseke, ono kripo. Kuleta fili la pa nasetne.
So is weer gestel, je krijg drie minuten om je zaak te stel, steek je hand op, je zal in die stoel kom sit hiervoor, i naam, waar i vandaan kom en of i weet bill ondersteen en of i weet wetsunwerp verwerp.
Let's start with the data here. And then may you sit here, then they'll give you a mic, sit here. Time my three minutes, three minutes. Can we proceed sir? Because we, maybe just to indicate that translation team has arrived. They can just stand up, you see them. And already, the lady has apologized on your behalf because we had to start without yourselves. And we want to take this opportunity to thank the lady that has done the job on your behalf. Obviously, as you get your salaries, you must share with her. Okay, can we proceed sir?
Good morning, my name is Kurt Fumah. I represent IOPSA, the Institute of Plumbing South Africa, and I'm the technical manager. So, we agree with this bill by the way, but we would like to see more in-depth than it. So, in your 1.3, you are introducing effective enforcement mechanisms and prescribing appropriate penalties, all sanctions, to deter non-compliance by home builders. So the issue we have is that once a home is built, we get a massive influx of queries from the homeowner and it all results to bad plumbing. The builder using unregistered, unqualified subcontractors, whether it's electrical or plumbing, it doesn't matter. And plumbing is a huge part or a huge expense of any home building. And anybody who spends, it doesn't matter what they spend on their home, deserves a right to have a fully compliant in terms of the sand standards and the South African National Building Regulations, a fully compliant working home. We also know that plumbing serves a very important health issue in our communities in terms of the plumber brings clean water in and it's his duty to get the wastewater and the sewage water out effectively to the waste plants that the municipalities run. So we would like to see something brought in that a builder has to use a registered, qualified, specifically in this case, in our case, a plumber. Because if he is a registered and he's qualified, then he has registered with a PERB, which is the Plumbing Industry Registration Board, and there is accountability. In our organization, we also randomly select and do audits on plumbing. So if there's something wrong that does not comply to the South African national standards, we will then, through our mechanisms of auditing the work, the plumber then has ten days to go back and refix. And if he does not do that, then there's a mechanism that we can sanction them. And that can only improve the quality of building in South Africa, the quality of housing that people deserve to have the right, correct housing. And for that reason, we would like to see the inclusion that a compliance certificate is issued by the plumber on completion of a building. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Can we then give the mama mic because she has arrived now? Then, sorry, sorry, sorry for disorganizing yourself sir. Mama?
I'd like to thank this opportunity that has been given to us. I am happy to see the members of parliament here because I normally see them on TV. I am, I am coming from N'Ntuzelo Workshop in Kukuletu. We have got many complaints as a disabled community. We normally, we normally go and register for houses as disabled people. And sometimes they do offer us such houses, but sometimes those houses are not adequate for our situation. As a result, some people are using wheelchairs, I'm also using crashes. And then our houses have got upstairs and then we are not able to walk like up and down because of our disabilities. Government does allocate us houses and you find out that those people who are given the task to actually administer our funds and those houses, they give us houses that are in very poor state, they are leaking and we don't get what we deserve. The problem that we have is that the inspectors and those who are given tenders, there is a lot of fraudulent activities that are happening. Those, for an example, the inspectors are manipulated and you find out that they don't give us houses that are in adequate state. As I have stated before, there's a lot of fraud happening. So, I bless that if someone is given a tender, there must be a follow-up on that person because there's a lot of fraudulent activities that are happening. As a result, our houses are in a very, very poor state. We want the bill to also cater for us people with disabilities. We don't want to see members during the election time because they normally wait for us to vote for them. So we don't want to be voting people only. We want the bill to also speak to our needs as people with disability. We don't want to be voters only, but we want to be catered in this bill as well. I thank you. My name is Deli Wemashaba, I stay in Del, but I'm originally from Kukuletu. I do support the bill, but I want certain corrections to be done on the bill and I also want certain things to be followed up on the bill. I thank you.
Thank you very much, mama. Translators, allow them to use their three minutes. You write down and then you summarize, you translate what they've said in the language. But if we go in between, we are unable to time them in terms of the minutes that we are giving them.
Morning everyone and thank you honorable member for giving us this opportunity. My name is Zama Mkuadju. I'm from an NGO called Development Action Group. Within NGO called Development Action Group, I've got a program that we call Contractor and Developer Academy. That's where we capacitate emerging construction companies and developers. I think for me, within the bill, we need to be clear on the definitions. Who is the homeowner? Because on the ground, there will be an emerging construction company. The question is, you mentioned CIDB. It's good that members of parliament are here today. Are they really doing their job in terms of developing emerging construction companies? I'm not sure. I think that's something that we need to look at as members of parliament because there's this new bill that is very technical. The question is, who is going to simplify this bill so that these different actors can better understand their roles and responsibilities? NHPRC is situated in Deppenville, the last time I checked. It's very difficult to access them. And as emerging contractors that we work with, as NGOs, we have been complaining to say, you are not accessible. How do we start to also make sure that NHPRC is accessible? You cannot access NHPRC via a public transport. You only access it via a private car. And even then, if you are lucky, you know that other side of the town. So accessibility from the side of NHPRC. But then also, they should also have a component that talks to training and development and simplifying the bill because currently they don't have. I think, lastly for me, on the ground now, while we are building BNG-type housing and there's contractors that are NHPRC that are driving that process. Since 2017, there's another actor or another players on the ground. We call them micro-developers. Those are the guys who are building rental stock in the townships. We tried to register one of their development in Fule in 2019. The requirement is, the contractor should be NHPRC-registered and then the developer themselves should be NHPRC-registered. I always say there's a difference between a micro-developer who's building flats in Kailecha in Delph with someone who's a big developer who's developing to sell. The guys who are building in the townships are not developing to get rid of the stock. And the NHPRC processes are not talking to that. And then for me, lastly, there's issues around liability. Are people clear about that in terms of who's liable for what? And then lastly for me, I think section 31 provides for failure to enroll homes. This section provides that failure to enroll homes will result in construction being stopped. I've seen people from NHPRC coming to sites. They only point the wrongs. They are not facilitators. How do we start to also train their inspectors? So that it's not about them pointing the wrong, but to say, this is wrong, this is how you correct it. I've dealt with them on the ground. I'm not talking about some that I'm thumb-sucking. Then, I think the other one is, more specifically, if we look at section 3.2.2B, requires the home builder to provide a guarantee to cover technical standards. First, this provides for an amount prescribed, so there will be a set value, I assume. But my concern is that a home builder who does not know about enrollment does not financially plan and he will not financially plan any of this. Then NHPRC stops the construction, what happens? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you have three minutes? Let's allow the translation team to translate.
My name is Inselo Zouzo, in Ikaswandi community.
Can you translate? He spoke with English.
Okay, I speak in English.
Sorry Baba. Members, I'm following the process of parliament. Members, I'm following the process of parliament. People can complain later. Can we get the Africans to summarize? Okay, can we proceed then if you have not listened? Okay, all right. Proceed, Baba. Okay, thank you.
My name is Inzalo Joseph. Yes, thanks, Amal. Good day, Kaitsees. My name is Inzalo Joseph. I'm a community member, and I was in the community. I shall say, I can pause the bill. My reader is, as I hope you're here to hear. You're there, before you sit, let you can see that what in South Africa in, when I read, I think this is a very good example of how South Africa, the country is. You create the most, the white people in one region, black people in one region, and the clothing in one region. So that is exactly what South Africa now is. And I think this is a very good platform to take our place, when it's more than 70% of the Iowa's people, as he is ayeunarche or title deed holder. He's all the time, so with who are they actually? Yeah, he's now 65 years old, holdings that the people now still pay rent. And I'm glad he's now still an underplayer, he's all the time. When I was a boy, I was a very good underplayer. Then I went to the backyard dwellers, not one of them, and he's more than 70% of the people who are out there. So, I mean, he's ayeunarche, so I can't say you're inclusive as you're sick of it. Let Amal first, I used to become of I used to own, and he knows the door, but he was a man from England. He doesn't understand. The government too, not treasury too, from the ANC, as never in space, but you can lend it properly, not this. What people, what the list of beggars, what blame in England, they risk, they beg, not now, now the day, and as a great fence, and insult to us people, the day blame, our people, he's born, he was beggared, many group areas, I, so so it is the day I'd worry, you're the boss, can pass, I say, thank you.
Okay, my name is Angelo Joseph. I'm a community activist. I just want to say good day to all of you in all the several languages, good day, molweni, gooja dag. I hope you all drove through town when you entered Haute Bay. Haute Bay is an example of the rest of South Africa. Colors on one area, blacks in another, and whites in a different area. It is what it is. It's a picture of South Africa today. Seventy percent of Iowa is not title deed owners. For 65 years, some of us have been paying rent in Haute Bay, and do not have ownership of these dwellings. Then you get your backyard dwellers. They're not owners either. This bill is not inclusive of all of us. Before you expropriate land without compensation, what about this whole mountain that is owned by a British person? And then the other side, there's also other owners. But we, we the South Africans who live here, we don't have any place to go. We don't own these properties. Before you start with this bill, be inclusive of all of us that do not own homes. Thank you.
I come along, I'm Angelio Joseph, and I'm a little bit lazy, I'm a little bit lazy. I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired. I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired. I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired. I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired.
You are saying you have applied twenty-six years old. We are trying to help you. Go and register your name there. And then we are going to take your name. Because you will have evidence. We are going to call the government of Western Cape, because they are the ones that implement houses. And as them, this woman has applied twenty-six years old, twenty-six years for house. You have not actually built that house. And then they must explain to the members of the committees. So we don't have exact answers ourselves. But we will actually ask the government of Western Cape, why you are not given a house? It might be that in the process of application, something went wrong. We listen to them and then correct what, why you have not been given a house. Yes, that's why I'm saying, go and register your issue there. So that we would know your name tomorrow. We would call you to say that you said in the public hearings that you have applied for twenty-six years. And then this is the evidence from the government of Western Cape. And then we correct the situation. That's why you have to go and register there. Because your three minutes, it's finished, my dear.
But I just want to ask you one question then.
No ma'am. I'm saying your three minutes is finished. Go and register there.
My name is Faika Hendricks. I'm from D S P. I'm a activist. I'm a Muslim woman. And I don't speak Arabic. Forgive me, I can't do it.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
That is a greeting in Arabic, I take it. Thank you colleagues. I'm ten here in the Wets Ontwerp. I oppose it. Why people who are here are so tired of these past years? I've been 25 years with my nine... But it's all believed. We're under pressure. The only time when we were so big, we weren't under pressure. It's too late for Mandela to return us, that we can bid. And therefore I thank you for Mandela. Further, in the Wets Ontwerp, nothing is worth. My children, I'm with my children. I had an opportunity to have a house on the Braai net. And here I am. I had 26 years ago done this house. I'm still here. Here, the regearing believes in nothing. This means nothing, it's null and void. What is the need for that I'm registering? I come not here. Thank you.
Moloeni, ngalensasai kamala mndungufari ta Hendricks. Nndungfazi ke ugonu shangalomaslamsi. Le pil and yitasi konke konke. Wa yeke ndandesaa kufudula kubalichantliziyo. Nemi nyaka ke ei twenty-six nihala emkukwini nabazu kulwano. Wa yeke umkuku etu uyavusa nchalo nchalo. Kutaaloke sense sensea ezitale ufulumeenda, kodu fulumeenda akaspenduli. Kutaala sensei zitele for twenty-six years. Kodwa ke kuli nyekala masumbulele uba umandela, uba usenzile ndoba sikuaz, uba inkolozi etu njenga maslamsi. Nabantu bebala, banga makalati. Sikuaz ke ukuprektizo kanyu kwenza inkolo etu. Usaloke uteka eza ma ke ukuteta tetana no mamalu. Watike makat kritise iskalazo sake paya kumakosa. Se parlamente apalintuwa tazabo. Nvenko ke ndungubona be komite parlamente. Bazoku bizu fulumeenda wasi Western Cape. Azoku feela pamke komite. Atatrisake gesinwesu kumila kunje. Engos.
The next person.
Moloeni. Ikamala mndungkonzi we ifanyamndungumenzela. Nihala ekailicha makaza. Ndiya ikasi pil, ndiya ivuela futi ndungdomcha. Because it's a no change in John Aguti. Na nihala ekailicha, jabe nihala ekailicha ndine NPC organization. But ndiya muke la kukonimizi, mtsambe njabe yeye akona lepili, it's a no. Abazalba kona basueleka kati kachane pokis. Kukona banda nabafunda yo. Uyavusa, kaku ne timvula any room ayus. Amanza ngelagla room akengaleka zo chwe front. And then akoba ndoba noita. Kutaala ndiya menitla manu tena koso mashishi, baba manu etuwa banda. Kube kono mnye umzo vusa, eywa soleka banda badala bakona, pata banda badala ngapaga tenzie. So na ndiya ikasi pil and ipaga atiku, de ivuela akola, nuzuteta akola.
Thank you ma. Can you go and, hello ma? Can you go and register that house to the officials there? Those, yeah.
My name is Konzwell Zela. I'm from Makaza in Kailicha. I stand here to support the bill because I believe it will make a huge change, especially to us as young people. My other concern is that there is a particular house in my area whereby the elderly people have passed on. And then they left their children behind. And the house is leaking and the condition is bad. There is also another example whereby also other elderly people, they passed on and left their children in dire need. But I stand to support the bill. And then the chairperson has asked the lady to go and register to the table, all the details. Thank you.
The lady that has just passed here, go and register that, oh, okay. Thank you. Proceed, the next person. Oh, okay.
I'm a founder of the foundation and I'm from Kailicha. I understand the Wets Ontwerp. And I think it's going to make a great difference in young people's lives. Our people are going to do it. They'll learn and then let their children with the house that lack and in need. The situation is then bad, since our people die. I really want not to repeat. I'm ten of the people here in the Wets. Thank you. The, the presenter to the dame invites to the registration table to register. Thank you.
Okay, I greet everyone. My name is Louiso Scotty from Imisamo yetu here in Houtbay. I support the bill. But in conditions. If you come to Houtbay, there's issues in Houtbay. Yes, people are saying that it's a microcosm of hope. But for me, if I give Houtbay in one word, it's a home of inequalities. The rich in one side and the poor in two areas, which is Hangberg and Imisamo yetu. The question that I have with the bill in terms of the timelines, I want us to be clear. We are here on the fourth of November. And this process still has to go to N C O P. But if us on the ground, we can see the officials again carrying on with something that touches with the warranty fund. I want to touch on the warranty fund. In terms of local economy, if people on the ground can see actions happening around these, not to wait for another fourth of November, which is one year. As much as the bill, there's other processes, but there must be something happening so that people can see what is happening. I'm also standing here representing the Imisamo yetu business forum. The challenges that we have as the business forum, there are big companies in Cape Town. Where you find out there's a project. An example of a project of the sports field in Iowa. Being the chairperson of the sports council, you find out that you are ignored. You don't even know the information. There was a budget that you know that the budget was this amount. But when the project starts, the budget is no longer that budget. But when you find out in the premises, you'll find out an organization with a young person who is an owner of that, who will find out this person is the same color as you. But when you find behind the scenes is the big names, big names of companies that will be heading this project. The question is what is happening to the local small businesses in terms of subcontracting in the businesses? And also when you talk about the issues of homes. This bill for me, these terms, I used to work for social development. Our acronym sometimes confuses people on the ground. We are saying the consumer. As much as I see the name consumer, it's another language. Before, our people knows themselves as beneficiaries. So now there is a beneficiary and a consumer, which will confuse that person who's on the ground. The quality of homes that we build for our people. In Iowa, those homes, if I can tell you those homes are leaking and the condition of those homes. My worry now, please with this warranty fund. If this warranty fund starts from the fourth of November, the question is what will happen to those people with those homes? Let's think of how about this fund says, we also consider the people who has these homes. When it comes to N H B R C, I'm very worried. It's my first time to see a brand locally in the floor. When I came in, I saw N H B R C branding. So it's very difficult. I'm working. How much more for a local enterprise who's not even working? People are struggling. They can't access the bill, as mentioned. I can't touch that part. But please, when it comes to Houtbay, Imisamo yetu and Hangberg, please guys, let's work together and unite. When people come to us, when I talk about Hangberg, I always remember the riots. The intervention programs that were done, they mustn't divide us. Because now you find out there's divisions amongst us. The divisions that delay the processes of these interventions that are taking place. A question of saying that we are renting a flat. When we take decisions, when people come, let's work as a collective comrades. And please, members of the community, let's work as a collective and make decisions. Not that I make decisions just because I was this person, maybe or this group that was favored by the people that come with services. I thank you.
Thank you.
Moloeni, nonke ikamala mndungloiso Scotty. Tisuka apa iHoutbay. Ndiya ikasa lepili, kwe mekwe ztile, nfunasilande lewe. Okokala iHoutbay ke yinda wa apo singa lenkaniyo. Ngokusala mni, siku ne inequality. Asilinga. Omya umbuzo, ngumbuzo uba lepili, it's a tati tloshe ngakananu kuze ifezegiswe. Ubani akapila paya parlamenta sinen kubu esilande loayo. Esuka apa njenga xeli. Ziyaku N A. Uksuka kuende zye N C O P. Baba be bona abantu apa be nganasi zinzu bedinga. Wakona kuka lomba, komba ulapa we pil utetange warranty fund. Abantu basetlali nibona, ba funu kubona izindosensek. Le warranty fund, ma iba ikasi abantu. Wakona ke apa Imisamo yetu, sinemisamo yetu business forum. Etike inga banda kanyo kusenzua ipatchet. Leipatchet, pirela ku big companies. Baba ke ngokoso mashishi nibala apa bona abantu ndu be ngakamuni. Wakona ke sinengaki kakuli ndoba chwe fronting. Apo uzobona mtsambe usoma shishi ni ongumdomnyama. Ibe ngatin kuwe wenzai izindo. Kodwa ngoto nganga apa yange mpaka. Kuka matoto ma kula mshope, amba be ngopongwa. Wakona ke kona lenkaki yesis kama city consumer. Kube kona elkamaleti beneficiaries. Tinasa ngawa banda abantu ndu elkamaleti consumer. Asilazi kumeke etu kubala ku consumer utetokwa ngumting. Tinasa zinoba ipen beneficiaries iteta nati njenga bakamuni. Wakona ke sinengaki kakulu we wellen kampa ndi kutwa N H B R C. Asifike leli ku yo, asikuaz ku access. Wakona ke sinesimgi ngazimbe ni, Imisamo yetu ne Hangberg. Sitigeti na ke ma kumanyanwe, ma zishlangani sisi sebenz njenga mbumba. Engos.
Chui dacheni almo. My name is Louiso Scotty and I'm from Isisamo yetu. First things I want to say that I understand the Wets Ontwerp. Something else I want to say is, as I look at our country, I want to say that this is the time of inequality. On the one hand, there are people who are very good. And then there are people who are violent on the other hand. As we look at the Wets Ontwerp, what is now coming to us, and we look at the time when this is now coming to us, we understand that there are still a lot of processes that have been done before. There are still NRVP to go. But we want very much action. Especially where it comes from the Warburg Funds. We know that it takes a long time. But we want to see that this is working and how this helps our people. The other question that I will talk about is our local people. There is a great challenge between our local people forums and the workforce and the large group. I'm the president of the sport round and I was very ignored here. I work for a group, but I see no one doing this in working training. This is always the large group that has a great impact in this country. What about the local group? They should also not be understood. Then we have the word verbriker. Verbriker. I think our people see this more as that they are starting this instead of verbrikers. I don't want to say that the house in our environment's situation is poor. I would like to see that here the Warburg Funds as soon as possible begin. What I also want to know is, the people who are already with problems and the Warburg Funds, they must start later. If they can help, then it's of course the question of the N H B R C. What a man never seen or never, this is the first time that I have placate and good before seeing. What I would like to say is, as he comes to our country, as he comes to Houtbay, then he should also look at Hangberg and Isisamo yetu. This should be seen. I don't want to say that our people in the different countries, we should work together, we should not share. Because Sam is stronger. Very thank you.
Ma.
Okokala. Manu abulise ama lungu asse parlamente. Suamkele ate asambe. Omileyo kulinda ukuma kawat ninety-eight, what committee? Egnes Mbiyanne. Egnes Mbiyanne. Kotoa. Kunzi ma ukuba. It's a first round in this struggle. Ngepili, kuchinjo, onu zanalo. Kandi klinga muna. Lenkebe ni zanayo, inita broad meeting. Ingabi kulekona ku yo. Kani zisileyo na yezanayo apa iHoutbay. Isapo uzobaba, kandi klinga. A second round, ikiongena ekailicha. Singa fi kitina apa si finalize. Sinababa ngabanya basipetayo. Ewe, lepili, intele. Kotoa anukuzo kwasu ndanitati iskade. Di mille kulinda. Nditindiya yamkeela. We need a broad meeting. Uba ikonsi esijayo. Mtlaba se kailicha. Minister. Uba be ngaba le meeting beninge, nepakatingenge olusimu. No kalelega ekailicha. De kusa banzima, uku amba koba. De nisau kibilika. Kuichia kiazwa oluse kailicha ni bone imeku etuwa. Se hlelikanjana. Ibu huongo. Ndisichonje, akusuba ngoba ndisiti. And kwasu velandi yamkele. And ifunu, pati unge ngayi nhuongo. Dipake esinzi, esakela zona. Ituti se pilchat. Wizindu, zesbonelelo, esini kwa zona. We need a better life. Masinga bone umbalo, oti, a better life. But when comes ndoba, ma face anena wa, it's not a better life. So vusa esizindu, wa ibasmenje ina ingango sbelo shobo. Se sefekiila ingati ingango zakiwé. Kama viti, ulboni kango eli ni viti. Ngoku ifanyalo namtsange indunge na ku yo. Pangapanda, uyabona kutuwa ngu national. Bagimna kini abu vusa. Wa ibani sakelinga kusbelo shobo. Nifunususo, kutuwa zikaki we ngu national. Leno ndisiti ndu iku yamkeela lepili, kandinda yamkeela. Wa intwenjalo ngoba, landu ndisainele na iniki documente. Na koba na opinanda kwasu, opinanda kwenza ngu yama. Ilendo ke ngondio iku yaya lepili, ze zetkandina yo inifaka ekadi. Pinde ungene ku toileti. Ufike zinganga ma pekte pekte. One last evening a year. Uito ngilenje, baba ndu nomsi mumku. Abanda bakulu, bamba angayopula. Ungene pafin, ipafu, zeseplastic. That's why I said we need a better life. We need a change. Not just a better life, a really better life. Ukwenze ndoba, sibene mbi no erite. Fu manse ipafu islibi yakyibilika. Fu ne kubamba lele, uzatoa puke paya kula bafu. Uzo mngadonkwa, ndoba lenhu akela yo na, aiko inshaw. Mna nitati basla, ndisbake ngaba, ndisbake ngaba makale pafin. Ukwenze ndoba, ndikwazu kutisstandi. Nifumanisindoba, le bafu.
Thank you ma.
Zedenzile, kuze zindao.
Thank you. Thank you ma. Thank you, your time is up.
Okay. But minister, we need a really better life. And even izindu, mazinga kali ufunyano angabantu anabitu ku thirty years.
Opelilis katisa.
At least, maziye.
Mama. Engos.
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 Engos mama.
My name is Egnes Mbiyanne Ma Boza. I come from Wat ninety-eight in Kailicha. I would like to pay a special greetings to the members of parliament for taking their time to come here. But when I look at the bill, the bill looks great. But I don't want to take a risk to say I support the bill because I don't know whether maybe it will bring change or things will remain the same. I also want to say that we do have leaders that are leading us. So I don't want to take a decision on my own. And also, I would have loved if this meeting was done at a broader meeting. Because we would love the committee to go and visit Kailicha. Because the infrastructure of the houses is bad and things are muddy on that side. We really need a better life. Furthermore, if you can go and look at the infrastructure like the doors, they are not in good condition. You also look at the bathrooms. You can even slide when you go there. Sometimes I need to put my towel in order to get a proper balance when I bath myself. Same applies to toilets. They only last for one year. They are not in good condition. My plea in a nutshell is that we need a better life. Thank you.
Thank you.
That here the gathering in a greater forum, a greater place must be found. When the house where we live in Kailicha is in a very bad condition. The bathrooms, for all so. But I care, I need to use my hands to use the facilities correctly. I don't want to repeat to say that the house and the bathrooms is not in a very good condition. And I think that we can be better and should create. Thank you.
Next.
Moloeni.
Holubak.
Diabulisa apa iParlamenta. Okokala mnan ndungmaskoli aize kumkuchana ikamalamo. Nihala ekailicha kawat ninety-eight. Di Wat Komite kona kwe talala business. Ku business sector. One, lepili lena. Fifty percent yayo and ikasi. Fifty percent yayo nde ikasa. Ngokozi zatzi ti. Lepili lena. Itata ep companies paya izni gameisibinzwa kuka iHousing. Ze zona ep companies ezzi, zitate is subcontractor. Bamazenzu umsibinzwa, zinga wezi umsibinzwa kwasu. End of the day, fu manse ba ezazi indu besenzu kwa paya zne cracks, zna yo yonke indos nailings. So then because of ababantu ababa tata ichip labor. Ngelo kesho unu buze ibillions paya zetena. Apa atate is subcontractor azaineka ithree thousand furuko kwa indu, yonke indu pele. So ezizindo ezzi, iskinga says bekona uchinjo oluko yo. Kolo talinga apa. Apa ngapambile ngekeshala apa te wa ngasozu iboni abu is subcontractor isoka indu. Ikampani ewine umsibinzwa apa sasi yazindoba, tinasi ziprikleyaz. Se ziplamba, se zipindaz, se zapenefita paya kusa ukeshwa. Abanga bawazi umsibinzwa bazawenza. Not is subcontractors. Eziza unamelukpe bu indu ngoku. Yokuwe namtsange indu, yokuwe namtsange indu namthi gomso, ipregiwo indu. After three days, betulilas. Ee indo kulekoni zanayo. Ndiya ibona yo intwe parku ninety-nine billion rents. Yetransfer of skills. Tina, zinga banda bamiyama asisange sa ifuma na noifuma na londo len. Ndoba ikona in ninety-nine billion rent. Ekona for ndoba umdi ikampani kwasu. Ndoba myne di assiste abantu abate. Okani umdi ya bio menze atizi. Ayikotulo ndogut, unanamtsange. And na lenansika ye National Home Registration Council. Asiboni kunda westala kus. Ikona njega nganabamnan ndinespa kaminso esiti. How can ba iParlamenta ngalele lenansika lelele, National Registration Council? How can ba inga ititi? Isaku ibeke indo ezau tibe yabantu yenze. Because kaucho ngile pakla le documente. Intele la documente leno ba. Le National Political House, ngabi isibenzwa ngola shobo. Isibenzwa hand in hand inabantu, keba yenze umsibinzwa omshle. Nazizindu, pa koma kailicha. Zipet, ngayona yonanjela. Kotoa kutuwa ikona. Ikona njani. Takis paya pataaluanje akonda ba yenza yo. Ah yenze ba usibenzwa aplo umsibinzwa aplo. And also, mna eyo kubela. Di tala indoba, le meeting lena sipuyo namtsange. Ewe iraiti intele. Kotoa ndinoto ngaba apa, antisboni smallpita, ismallbusiness apa. Antisboni, abona banda bemelaba bayatata bayaregistwa pakla National Political House. Baona, bani koupochi tuwa bariste, pasokwazu, uamba kukulumka kuku yo. Titwa nansika iParlamenta. And isibenzala nenansika N N P C. So pangaba ndinukwenzeka londo lenyo, ku bizu zone ismallpitas. Mna dikusekta ibusiness. And iboni tuktuwa unababantu be ismallpitas. Aba noti ba uplift we apa. Because iParlamenta. Engos.
My name is Masikollem Kuzana. I come from a committee in Wat ninety-eight. I am also a committee member there. I am in this business sector in housing. Chairperson, I wouldn't say that I am supporting the bill entirely. I am supporting the bill fifty percent and also not supporting the bill on the other half. What we see on this bill is that it takes big companies. And what they do is when they are building a particular project, these big companies, they employ subcontractors. And then these subcontractors employ cheap labor. At the end of the day, you find that the houses are cracking and they are leaks, they are not in good condition. People are given in monies in amounts of three thousand rents and their work is not adequate at all. I must also mention to you that during apartheid, we didn't help subcontractors at all. And things were a bit good on the housing part. I also heard something that was said about this.
Eh I also heard something that was said about this eh nineteen billion renes that is aimed for transfer of skills, but as the black eh community, we don't benefit from that and would love if we can benefit so that we can be made artisans. Also, there is an issue of NHPRC which is not accessible. It will be good if this committee or parliament can dissolve that NHPRC because it doesn't do work at all. It looks good on paper, but there is no implementation and it's not even visible in places like Kailicha. Eh Chapasin, I would have loved in this meeting if we had the the small scale builders so that they can also benefit and be registered eh in NHPC. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Goeedagane allamal, my name is Masikole Isaac Nkutiana. Ek as deel van a vikomitie eh salkesektor ba isan han Kailicha. Um ek wil eerstensee dat ek here di wetsonderwerp so halfte aufde ondersteen. As ons kijk na die groot maatskapaya, wat werkeri, wat die kontraktekri, alikri, al die groot projecte. Maar wat dan gebeur is, is dat helle dit uit sipkontrakteer. En wat dan gebeur is, is dat a baye swak vakmanskap is. En dit veroorzaak dat die haise nie langvat voor dat dit begin kraak nie. Ik moet net bijse, tijds en apartijd was agen sipkontrakteers nie en die haise was um baye goed gebouw. Ik wil ook net praat over die negenentig miljoen rand wat terzijde gestel is voor opleiding. Ons zal baye graag ook deel daarvan wil hee. Ik wil ook net seet dat hier die behuisingsraad is nie baye toegankelijk nie en dit is ook nie sichtbaar nie. Ik zal baye graag wil zien dat meer klingskalse ondernemers, bouwers, meer geleende kry. Baye dankie.
Molweni, ndiabulisa kumalu kwa seiparamente kumtu onko koyenje.
Eh. Who can hear you ma?
Ndiabulisa kumalu kwa paramente kumtu onge sentlini. Ikamalamo ndingmandisa kastonga. Eh disuka ku ward ninety-five eh Kailicha eh ndilino kule PC. Eh ndiabulela gepili. Eh ngoba si fumani opportunity kuti sime lapanati. Eh inga gi inint eh Kailicha. Eh umse kelo kwa glevik on Tuesday, jengo mdebandwa balshalema joto mbini eh kuchay zinklizi level. Kula moyawa lamini. And then uchulmentwa se Cape Town wat imaterela kasa ikopi wayeka. Eh si bane challenge enkungu en xalo. And di noes te longe. Apa kumalu kwa paramente malunga nezinto the subsidy. Ogutizi tata how many years because I am more than ten years in the applya. But ikaufoona kutwa ogu waiting list, I don't know how for how long ogu waiting list. And isinengagi enkungu ezindosee zenzweze subsidy. Mna ben ditela nje i follow up. Yoba kubekwa ababalandelela malunga ne materi. Because if faila yoba kuti mekui crex, kubeku likisha ikala kumateri. Yoba i checke kuti materi ngawa equality ya yo i right na furukwa kelabantu. Go ba most of the time, izindlu zabantu ziyavouza. Kunya zelawa kungyenere lokaye babayo uchincha, indlu ekuchelu imale nins. Ndiakaye lasshobo sam. Oguti kenisbonelele because end of the day, abantu bayasueleka okobelinde izindlu. Sishi abantu anima joto mbini acha every day. Dineso steele engos.
Eh good morning, honourable members and fellow South Africans. Eh my name is Mandy Sasi Tolle, coming from ward ninety-five in Kailicha. Eh I stand to support the bill, but we want more things to be done. And eh we've got many problems in Kailicha. Let me make an example. Eh last Tuesday, there were eleven ships that were burnt down because of the great winds that were happening. And eh the Western Cape government did not come eh for help. And also we've got a problem with the material. The material is not in good condition. We want a follow up on that. Eh the quality is bad. Eh we do want an intervention. Furthermore, I applied for a house for ten years and then when I phoned to inquire, they are saying I'm still on eh on the waiting list. I thank you.
Goeedagane allamal, my name is Mandy Sasi Tonga. Ek is van vik fivennentig in Kailicha. Ik wil net seet dat ek i wetsonderwerp ondersteen, maar ik voel dat het baye verder moet gaan en baye meer voor ons doen. Eh man Kailicha het ons redelijk um probleme vooral met brande en met die wind wat so um hard gewaaiet, nou die andere dag het baye haise afgebrand. Um ons zoeken ingreping van die haise is in een swak to stand en ons wil baye graag he dat dit moet verbeter. Baye dankie.
Hi, good day everyone. My name is Kautarko Wapman. I'm from DPSA Disabled Group from Bon Tevel. And I guess I do support the bill, but there are some questions that I have. So I would like to know, what does the home warranty fund include everything? The roof, electricity box and what else inside the house? And will people be refunded for what they have given out, for what they have done so far or paid so far? And would it be possible for a house, for a office or the housing consumable to be located in our communities just for some awareness please? And... When it comes to the... New, conscious question that we would like to know, but very sensitive topic as well, which is why attenders been given to gangsters? And how do they get away with it? How do they get away with it? Don't they get background checks? And why is the housing list so long? What is the delay? The land, employees? Why can't young students or matriculants be employed in the human settlements eh department? And something regarding the building inspectors? Is there someone higher than the building inspectors which you can eh lay a complaint? Because houses are being built, they are being approved by building inspectors, yet there are so many problems. And um... As for the Bon Tevel housing database, as I have spoken about the long waiting list, the Bon Tevel housing database is only busy with people from nineteen eighty-nine now. So where is house, how long must people still wait? And then this also falls on the human settlements. When it comes to the RDP houses, the houses are very small. People are not, they do appreciate the houses, but the houses is very small. There's such a lot of crime happening because there's no privacy in the houses. So that is my questions. Thank you.
Eh Molweni non kengalen sasa. Ikamalamo gu kosa kopman, disuka ke kumbu choi epsa eh Bon Tevel. Eh di melek e elitandelo labanda bakuba zegleyo, nababantu ke bazinfama. Kwakona ke ndinemi buswana eh ndinayo eh okokala indoba nek abantu abase zakeli, abase mekubilu kwa kaisindlu. Ngabamshambi bazogu niwa inkaso male kuis indoba bache bazpukula ezindli nisabo. Kwakona siafunake indoba ta kusenzwa le pili, kubeko ya awareness campaigns, kamanyamazi, kubekwa mapulu okazisa abantu. Wayke kule pili, inga apa le pili lena, iso kabatatela ingalelo abantu abablant nabatef, kamanyamazi abantu ke abase situli nabanda banga bonio. Wayke kuteni ezitenda tazukucha kwele kandelo ezizindlu, ziniku abantu aban aba imikeu oka ni gangstars, kuteni kuketo abon. Eh kwakona ke kukou libaseko kakulu, kubonelolo zindlu. Eh siafunake indoba abandabacha eh young people, bafuma namatuba enga eshonabo. Kwakona ke kaka koko ez inspectors, ezitashwe, kuteni umkanga to we zindlu eh ukumeko embi kangaaka. Kwakona ke kukou abantu akabulushu, abalindele ezindlu. Eh kutala ke namke ndikule waiting list kodak anka fuma ningeto. Indoba na kala yo, indoba nek yoke kutonge ababantu bacha baswa kuleminyake yo nineteen eighty-nine. Eh okokobeela ke salo, ezindlu shala kuso, zinana neka kula asnaspace, kanga kubake ngugu asukuselekanga, ilon dosubona ulapulomteto lu senzeka, imishanezol. Engos.
My name is Kaufer Koepman and ek is van DPSA Bon Tevel. Ik wil net seet ek ondersteen die wetsonderwerp, maar ik wil graag wet wase bewustheid wete betraking to die verbreiderswet. Gaan doewes in blindes ook ingesluit word? En ik wil net wet hoe kom bindelede weg daarmee om met hier contracte te sluit zonder daar achtergrond eh eh onderzoek uitgevoerd word na halle herkomst. Kan jongstudenten in dienstgeneem word en kan ons asseblief wet waken ons klachtis in dien als dat jenig is bestaan? Dan het Bon Tevel e baye lang wachlijst. Het is nou je speesig met negentien negenendtachtig se haise of ansouke, wanneer gaan onze weer kry? Dan wil ik ook net seet baye dankie, this is for menslike leaderships, die hoop haisis is baye claim, was word vardirde it wel, maar it is baye baye claim. Dankie.
Eh thank you, thank you. Eh man tate tu banam du bulisa kumalu kwa paramente, du bulisa onge umdogoyo abo. Eh man kala ngutinda ekasa i bill. Man kala ngutcho kala ndeikasa i bill, ndeikasa i amendments, koyo kumteto es laulayo because is negalanwana kumiteto ibi kona kai feli shile, eh since amendments, eh changer. Eh bo so ited by democracy, yakuli pikapambi. So ndeikasa i bill, ndeikasa's amendment. But I just want to specify some, just few things in terms of this bill. One, I need the specification from this bill that monitoring the functions of the municipal it in terms of the human settlement. You know why? Because the seat of Cape Town is stealing our land, using the means of human settlement. They selling our land, good private organization. Good eh donendau eh es den villa, kwa taban mabo applye the subsidies abo, yehausen subsidies abo, bazafmane zindlu, go rent to own, oka ni go rent to buy. Ta abantu sedefukala paya, ea chinsumeko, eh kasohof ngulandau and o onwang kumalu kwa paramente, thieves. 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 Well, ndinndin, anzu abiza, shame. But now number two. Ditela ilandoga eh eh le pili, ibe consist of illegislation, ibe ne judicial powers, uwenzelba ezithief, tazpili, zbanjwe, zingafuma ni pili. Because zinga snanda ozolala nje is because of corruption. Kungekonda ozolala nje, winga developing je infrastructure because of corruption. So ibinga aske, city basa yenza le pili, city tata, simfinfi tapa kutaala le legislation, city masifa kide ne judicial powers, kubanjwa abantu, it be project ipejuanga, umtu abanjwe. Because if you go around the country, project is incomplete because of the thieves. Ditela i pili, I'm worried wana in, I think human settlement not will koyo up. I don't know. But bandwa ona ibe kona ne land affairs, that represent in section twenty-five. Because the cause of the delay of the development of the infrastructure in houses because of human settlement, dakana mtlaba. So umtlaba ngugaban, kutwa ngugamaspaala. Umaspaala, seat of Cape Town, you know, we know it by the history of oppression. Yeah, bo because of is coming from the eh the time of the apartheid regime, where you see that this city was really ran by apartheid spinners. That's why you see, 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 sohugen, sine colored areas, sine white areas. Sitela ngoku eh eh umma u u u national, gas human settlement, asichonge wana, umaspala, u functiona kanchani, that is number one. Number two, kwa kutizain oka ni kusenzwa ez planning, abachali ma be patent parcel of the planning because klasinge u patent parcel of the planning. Sitela ngoku sitala kunda au eznamanzu wetland, utbagea necha, kubeku ifi rent disasters because of asnamtlaba. So if u u land affairs eh de la pa benza outi, magasi pe umtlaba, sakeni zindlu because sitlune ne ezindli nisit. Lastly, because of human settlement is not about building the houses, is about abachali, bachalanjani. Ndifuna zeniti, kwa napakule pili, nbe specified kui 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 plannings ez eh ez ez area zetu, zbe based with social economic practice. Ibe kona ndawesakwazutengselakuso, ibe kona ndawesfuno uwe sseranama shishiniku uso and ezao pilonga apuklalin because in wenzekayo, si 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 fumani zindlu, obe ngapangeli. Akonda waten. So I think le pili must also carry a part of social economic practice to say that there will be the houses, there will be ilandoga eh eh business centers, there will be the schools, there will be all that kind in terms of the social economic practice. Thank you.
Eh my name is James Boy. Eh I come from Freyfront. I stand to support the bill. Eh I want also to thank the members of parliament for coming here to hear our views on this bill. Eh I also support the bill eh with its amendments because it's a game changer from the principal act and eh it shows that eh there is democracy in action. Eh kandzonke nak eskosi ni, diafuna indoba nak eh uchulmentwa kuma isabe human settlement libeke iliso kumaspaala eh wenda. Ba uchulmentwa kwa be umaspala olapenjo na koloni, uyathande ke ukunika umtsaba, kuma kuma shishinabala.
Um the the person who was speaking was speaking first. So can you, yeah, can you?
Okay, cool.
Talk English eh so that we should not miss some of the issues.
All right. And then eh I want also on the bill, honourable chair, to consist of the judicial powers so that the thieves eh in this housing industry can be apprehended because there's a lot so that the thieves eh, in this housing industry can be apprehended, because there's a lot of criminality. Eh, if there are certain projects and you find that, that there are people who are doing criminal acts, they must be held accountable. Also, I want to highlight that the human settlements department deals with how to allocate dwellings for the people. But I also want the land affairs department to also be included here, because it talks to section twenty-five. Eh, also chair, the community must be part of the planning, they must not be left behind, because at the end of the day, if they are left behind in planning, we end up in living in wetlands. Furthermore, chair, the bill must also talk to social economic eh, proactiveness. We want eh, the business to thrive here. For instance, you can't give a house to a poor person. That poor person must be able to be provided opportunities for his business to thrive, and also for the schools to be built and so on. In a nutshell, I stand to support the bill, and I thank you.
Better, now we back. My name is James Bai, om kusi sidloye. Um, ek vil letse ek bedanki leder van die parlement wat afgekommet in, ona os kom laistretin, voor ons het anbiet. Ek understeen ni diwetsontwerb, dit is maia kantelpunt, eh, keerpunt, met al die veranderingen damisam, wa daamisam gaan. Ek vil letse dat hierdie eh, ons moet ook uitvoerende magi, daar is baie krimnele dade, en ni di mensen moet anspreklik gauw word. Ek vil letse ook letse staat kap staat stiel ons grond. En dan wil ek letse ek is, ons is arm, en ons moet die geleentheid krai om in die gemeenschap eh, ons bezigheden te kan bou, en scorete te kan krai. Die gemeenschap is arm, en moet geleentheid krai, een deelwees van beplanning. Ons moet sociale, economische rekwees, en weer ins arm mensen moet geken word in die zaak, baaidanki.
Dank you very much, another ten. One, one, one booty, two booty, booty, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eh, I've said that we are going to make sure that everybody who want to speak speaks in this meeting, as long as you cooperate with me in terms of time. Three minutes. And eh, those that does not want to talk to the bill, but they have issues of housing, please don't come here, just go straight to the table and register your points. Those that have problem of housing, but they don't have anything to do with the bill, because we are members of parliament, please go and register your issues there. Eh, can we, can I request that let's lower our voices, so that we can hear one another? And please, those that wants to speak to one another, with eh, you can go outside and speak outside, and then you'll come back. So the table, please lower, lower your voice as you register your points, please. Let's proceed, bab.
Okay. Eh, i kama, kungu Patrick, i fanyo kumateisi, di from Quad Eighteen Kayilicha. Mateisi, M A T E Y I S I, Quad Eighteen.
Sorry bab, sorry, sorry bab. Please, there is lot of noise, eh, protection services, please help us. The noise is too much, we are unable to record. And, and I must remind you that when we started, I've indicated that you are live. Therefore, those people who are listening to your debate outside, they'll be disturb by your voice, please. If you want to speak, go and speak outside, you'll come back.
Now, inden betayo, indobana aba, besimnetiswa ambanancha, omdo mentally disturbed, uki akwazulu, mseri dozake kakhle, ite chumezake skonezin, na indoyake yonke. Paritpele ngosuku, kua tatwa abantu abebekumbu to o i favor, eh, o, 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 ndogwenza, no tayaba. Ya bo na abanaba online, na eh, ke ubama kusese, no malume, bego domdu, pas, asavu, mubama kasuke. Usekla site, la site ke ngugunzi, bayo kiwe, because aban, bavele bazwakoka isheks, zako apa. So, akutekbe komdu, otte okay, duwe glu site. Genma ino bakufune akususo eh, nakala, okelu aba ban bazi favorites, bazwakala, lendawo kama lumebe rend.
Malu bazi favorite.
So, yes, so indenza moifeza yeti, usekinma agi okususo kabantu.
I am Patrick Mateisi from Quad Eighteen Kayilicha. I'm coming from a organization called Africa Rise. I won't be long, because eh, my point has been already covered by the previous speakers. I heard my uncle, who was mentally disturbed, he was staying in a site and was also registered. But eh, there were some eh, people who were moving around as an organization, removing people forcefully from their allocated site. And what was happening, people would be removed from their sites, so that they can put in formal structures. But with my uncle, that never happened. Instead, they brought people into the site where he's residing, and then they wanted those people who are favorites to those who are organizing. They wanted those people to get their structure built in that eh, site where my uncle was staying. So all in all, what I'm trying to raise is that we do go to housing to report these issues, but nothing is happening. So this corruption is still happening, corruption of removing people forcefully from their rightful sites, and put people who are favorites to those who are organizing. So that's the major problem that I want to raise with the committee.
Eh, before you translate, ma'am, wh- where's that guy, you must go and register that eh, issue there.
Patrick Mateisi.
Go and register there.
Patrick Mateisi, opie.
Can I repeat myself eh, those that are on the line? We want those that makes inputs on the bill. If there is anybody who has got a problem of housing, please, you don't have to go there and register, you, you, talk there, you can just go to the table, so that your issues can be registered properly there. And then eh, as we are going to close, we are going to tell you how we are going to attend to those issues. Here we want people who wants to talk on the bill, this is a public hearing on the bill.
I'm going to repeat what chair said first, and to be get the line right, and then I will translate what the previous speaker said, fine. So, hierdie mensen wat hier sit, wat hier wil praat, asabliwe, asha yeba heysingsprobleme, gaan registreer jou zelf regheid bij die tafel da bij die antenare. Ih hoofne in hierdie rei te sit, om e behysingsprobleem te besprek of antaalne. Hierdie rei mensen is slechts voor mensen wat inzette belever op die wetsontwerp. Hierdie is een publieke veroor, oor die wetsontwerp wat voorgelees is. Toons beginne, zo asabliwe, jy kriet de minuut om e inzet te lever oor die wetsontwerp alleenlik, en daar gaan jy regheid naar die tafel voor registratie met e behysingsprobleem. Mynom is Patrick Mateisi, ik is van Kayilicha, van die Africa Rise project. Ek gaan i langweesne, die mensen voora ma e dreets gesee wat helle wil see, ek gaan kortlikse nette dop net herhal, wat mij belangrik is. Mijn oma is verstandig gestrempen, hij blij in een huis. Maar die corruptie wat plaatsvind gebeur nog steeds, mensen word met mag en kracht van helle huisse verwijder. Ek wil letse dat, we baie graag vra, dat idana kijk, in sekermarkt dat war, ons klachtis kan leme di juricorruptie wat dus teetz plaatsvind, danki.
Eh, next.
Eh, molweni wazali, si bulisa kakulu, kama lunge parlement, eh, molweni wazali. Eh, sitike, si akamaku, shaka kulu, kubanda bakoyo patnekai, siti makamaku. Eh, low teta yo, ngungusi, ucho ngulanga, kazwe tala. Ndisuka kumbuto o i African, nisha sen traditional council. Eh, silapake, kwi, na kwi Kayilicha, traditional council. Eh, ma si vume, mxtali ngapambili, siavuma, kuba ge, sisa wasela man, zaswe kuti. Siawamkeela ge, kakulu ge, eh, ipil, kodwa ke, sinezizatu. Ndjenga abantu abakokele abantu, ksaline. Eh, abase benzi sa, na kunye no somashishi ni, abasa kulaio. Si kesasabenza kakulu, glomga, sesbenzana ne, eh, human settlement. One, sino, kandova, lo somashishi na basa kulaio, ukuzi bafuma ne imisibenz, paya, wa human settlement. Ngapambili, ba be fumana ungeto, kunyuucha, yaza baku sipra, yapeela lo nyoba, yoba mabafuma ne imani. Now, umtu fumana umsebenzi, engena unemali lekukalis, sitine kume ko ezinjaalo. Zeezizo kubalo, umdu kufneke kakona, ayo registrerisha, kwenya shpiar si. Engena yo imani, une kampa, ni kontra, ta regisarche, kwa sia ipsi. Ina four years, ah, if fumani imsebenzi, uzao puxa kanjani, lo mtsali. Si aktelake, iyo ke, ke, ukuatrenza, bemafuchane, kmtali ngapambili. Ukuti, ukobani, ka sipaitova, lokba ibuyele banduin. Yonke, intika lebanduin, ukuzi, ikuzi, izi, izi ngapambili, kungaku uzé. Umaama uchetenge zindu ezmeingwe, ezzito ti, mandu kumbo uzemzali. Uksugela ngon ninety-five, o human settlement, wa vume la, indobama maraku izindu, ezengo thirty-six square meter. Uzoku uma, kobani, ko twenty-ten. Now, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, o somashishi ni, bazitengi sile, ngokwaka izindu iz square meter, ezinkulu. Yeenzalo, ndo ba, umja ngaikebe kwalenzo ayakayo. Okokala, une gezwa imali, ubama mokwa ka thirty-six square meter, wa uyoka kawe, no forty-four square meter, genka bubona imeko, paisance. Ingaki, snaw kakulu, okustati. Lulande lelelo, olumabamalu nziwe, guti partment. Inspectorse, si kona, si bakona, on the field. Izindu, si passes swazenga, kange zinziwa. Si kona, si glomkanvi, iminyaga, imini. Si passes swes, si akut, kanga ngukubana, ngutlesha, pi, fokba, spekia, valu, kwa kiu. Lo ndo, isa afecta, lo umdu, zaongena paklanju, kuba ekoke samkanga twi. Iyo ke, lo ndobe sa aktelake, mxtali ngapambili. Si meli abantu, aba ne koyo abo, si meli izi zwengesi izi. Kungavzuyeleka kakulu, ndo ba, ngake, ike ipumele komishi, ikuye ufiga pay Kayilicha. Si kwas, ndo ba, si nigeze izi, vo, ezzuka ibanduin. Kona imbono, inke, ingaki, lulande leloano, lokfa ni balu nziwo, tamabu.
I am chief, zongil, zongulanga swelitala. I'm coming from the African Religious and Traditional Leaders Council, which I also belong to the Kayilicha Traditional Councils. Eh, we welcome eh, the bill, and I also want to echo my greetings to the committee and parliament at large for offering us this opportunity. We welcome the bill, as I'm standing here, we also represent emerging eh, business pe, eh, people, as well as different eh, community members that we are leading. Eh, the emerging business people are suffering, they don't get a job. They use eh, to get eh, assistance through New Usha, which later became Zebra. But after then, it's quiet, the Department of Human Settlement doesn't eh, offer them any job. And also, they are expected to go and register with the HRPR. And if they are not registered, they don't get eh, the, the job that they supposed to have in order to survive. This opportunity that you brought to us is a very great opportunity. We really wish that this opportunity was given to the broader forum, to our people, the people that we are leading. We appeal to you that please, take note of what has been said here. One lady here also indicated the challenge of the houses that are very small that they are staying in, as well as the size that they are staying in. There was eh, a quota of thirty-six square meter that was offered to the people, and the years continued up to twenty-twelve, twenty-ten. And eh, the, the, the business people who were offered the job, sold the bigger part of the square meters, which was forty-four square meter. They sold those square meters, so that the people who are going to stay in those houses get a smaller size. Thirdly, the other thing that we want to echo is that there's no monitoring in whatever is happening. Yes, inspectors do go and eh, rubber stamp by saying they have eh, moni, eh, inspected their houses, but still, their houses that they are, that are built are shorty houses, they still have challenges. People staying in those houses are still faced with a lot of challenges. We are representing the community members and different eh, sectors of the people. All those people have the same concern and challenge that I've indicated. There should please be monitoring, a follow-up. Yes, the bill is, is good as it stands, but please let there be eh, monitoring, thank you.
I'm looking after the people. I'm from Africa. A religious traditional lawyer. I'm proud. I want to thank the leaders that they have come to listen to our problems. I welcome that you're here. And thank you for your experience, in addition to my community, here to be heard. The people are sick. They don't have money to register in NHPRC. And they don't have work. It's a good experience here. And I'm very proud of the Wex-ontwerp. I, as it is believed, have learned about what is said here, the people. One woman has noticed that it's a very small house she lives in, but it's only 26 kilometers. Then, there are other people with a larger house where a part is sold for sale in a smaller house for other people to give. Yeah, there is monitoring, but it can be done better. There are inspectors, but the burden that exists is the same for everyone. Our community members are very grateful. When we all find the same problems, our women are very nice. Follow as it is believed here the problems. Thank you.
Next.
If I may, address the Chair, please. You asked to separate the people that's got input to deliver on the Act from the people who's got housing problems? So she was asking me if she's got a housing problem, should she still address you or should she go directly to the table to register?
I've requested those that have housing problems to go and register there.
Okay.
So now, I want to give those that wants to talk to the bill.
Okay.
Yes.
I will advise them to go.
Yes.
I'm very glad that you're here. I'm very glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. And I think there is still a concern. The bill is very difficult to address in a fair and right way. But I'm glad that you're here. But I'm glad that you're here. So I think the bill was involved when the houses were built in Freyfront. Am I right by saying so? So if they were involved, there are so many houses, up to over 100. That is like vandalized. That is, there is no one in our area, which is Freyfront in Muzenbe. So what is parliament or what is housing doing about that houses? Because we've got also millions in the same area of people who are still waiting for the houses, whereby there's also these houses that there is no one. It's being used by the factories and everyone wants to use it. Because some of the people passed away who were owning. Now, who's the responsibility to come and check this place, don't have anyone anymore? Can we maybe give this person to the next person who's on the waiting list? Because I believe when Human Settlement was giving the houses, like I was reading through the bill, they were checking that the house is there for this second family. It's got everything, it's got a door, it's got windows and everything. Now, the houses that are there, it's like, it's only walls that is left because it's been vandalized. Like no windows, no doors, no toilets, nothing. So I would really like to ask Human Settlement if they can maybe conduct whoever's supposed to be responsible to visit our Freyfront area and check with those places. Because to me, it's like, that is money, that is dust sitting, not being used the way it's supposed to be used. Because if that houses can be reissued to the people who's on the list, it will make sense and then the whole housing department can come and fix those houses for the people who's on the list. And the other thing I want to notify regarding the Freyfront area, we've got an informal settlement there called Overcome. There's always fires. I think people who read papers will see. There's always fires every now and then there. So we are one of the areas that we had fires in our Shacks. So we stay in this round 745, the plot number. But what I want to know is, if Human Settlement can, please, talk to City of Cape Town. They must stop harassing us. They are harassing us. They don't want us to build fences around this bungalow that we built with ourselves after our places burned down. No one came and gave us material to build. We built, but when you're inside your house, by the door, anyone can pass because you are not allowed to fence around. People die there, people get raped. They break in every day because you've got no gates for your area. So please, if Human Settlement can do that favor for me, and I thank you, Sister.
I've realized that people now, they maneuver themselves towards raising their problems using the bill. Please, I want, we are, go and register your problems there. All the problems, whether it's written or spoken there, we are going to attend to it. Nothing we are going to left. But today, we are here to solicit your views on the bill. Please, I'm begging you. Because we'll deny those that wants to speak on the bill because we know that there are a lot of problems in housing. That's why we are giving you the opportunity to write those problems there and we'll come back for the problems. Today, we want your views on the bill. So can we agree on that? So that when you go on the stage, talk about the problems, I'm going to stop you. I must not be said to have been rude. Please.
I'm glad that you're here. 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 I'm glad that you're here.
Thank you as it is believed. It is the same for me, the government, what the Wex-ontwerp will talk. The government will understand, understand, understand. If the only problems are housing, you should register at the table there and register and solve the problems. But here, the government is a public error mainly for people who want to live in the Wex-ontwerp that was read, that began here. Can you, as it is believed, use the government's actions and not the housing problems in here, the people, in here, the microphone, here, for me? There, the problems, you should register at the table there and register there, register at the table. Very good.
Next.
I'm very glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. And I believe that you're here. I believe that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. And I believe that you're here. I'm glad 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 that you're here. I believe in the register. I believe in the register. I'm glad that you're here. 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 I believe in the register. I believe that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I believe in the register. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I believe that you're here. I believe that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that you're here. It's 36 square meters. I'm glad that you're here. It's 36 square meters. I'm glad that you're here. And I believe that you're here. I'm glad 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 that you're here. I believe in the register. I believe in the register. I'm glad that you're here. 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 I'm glad that you're here.
Come, come.
Okay, I'm not listening. At 12:24.
Okay. I'm not listening. At 12:24. Greetings to everybody present here. A special greeting to the members of parliament. I never thought in my life I will ever see the people from parliament face to face like today. So this is a very special day to me. Firstly, I want to state that I support the bill. But I have a message to the builders. People who are building houses should stop doing shoddy work. They should build houses of a good structure. They should be registered and we should understand the way that they follow or the procedure that is followed when they register should be the legal one. Because we know people might be in possession of fraudulent registration documentation. And if a person has been found to have acquired fraudulent documents, that person must be sentenced. Not just for two years. It must be for a very, very long time. Because for two years, after two years, the person will come back and also continue to acquire fraudulent documentation. So I stress that those people who are found to have acquired fraudulent documentation, they must be sentenced for a long time. And also, the houses that are being built must be houses of a good standard. They would be, they must be houses that could stand, withheld the bad weather conditions. The houses that we get at times, they have some leaks and cracks on the walls. There should be a kind of guarantee that a person, when the house has been handed over and the person, the house has got leakage or damages, that house must be attended to. As long as the person is not working or cannot afford to repair the house himself or herself or have a child who's earning enough to can take charge of taking, of repairing the house, that house must be continuously repaired whenever there's a damage that emerges from that house. So we are pleading with you. Please, there should be some kind of monitoring. Even those who are doing monitoring, they also need to be monitored themselves. That is the only way for us to get this, to bring an end to corruption. Thank you.
I'm Molly Gilesele Toyane from 24 in Delph. Very good for your experience that you, for the leaders, have come to talk to us. I have never thought I would see you live in the life. Here is a very special day for me. I would like to say, I understand the Wex-ontwerp, but for you, that people need to build to build new houses. Follow the regulations. People need to come back after two years to monitor. Build houses of good standards. The houses must be able to stand in the house. The roof, the wall. It must be reinforced, that the house will hold. And the people don't have the money to buy new houses or to hold them if such a risk is not. We are fighting for monitoring. That is the only way for corruption to stand and the quality and standard can be ensured. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I am councillor Lungiswanjunje, deployed as a PR councillor in Ward 97 in Kailijcha. I do have six points to add to the bill, but I'm going to keep it short and I'm going to summarize it. Okay. Then I'll just hand in my, okay, perfect. Now, the bill is beautifully laid out in theory, but not in practice. And one might say it's exclusionary of black people from a cost perspective, in a business point of view, especially when it comes to the penalties. How will this bill be enforced to be inclusive of those privileged and underprivileged? And what will be of benefit to those living in the poor communities in an RDP as the regulations are suppressive of even further extensions or development in a private space? This bill itself doesn't address the capacitation of emerging black contractors so they can meet the bill standards. And while it addresses contractors, it doesn't address the quality of supplied materials for constructions of houses, given that already from an infrastructure point of view, we have a spatial planning problem due to white dominance together with NHRBC. Thus exclusion of informal settlements in their entirety. You cannot exclude informal settlements just because it is not formally laid out as a concrete structure. Therefore, this part of the bill must be totally removed from the bill itself. But as I said, I do have six points. They are very long, so I'm going to add them in writing.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Rajslak Lungiswa Nchunje. I'm a portier group leader in 279 in Kailijcha. I have six points about what the Wex-ontwerp that I'm going to address because it's very long. And therefore, I'm not going to talk about the Wex-ontwerp very shortly. I don't want to say that it theoretically is very good. But how is this work done? I see certain problems with the work. And also, to make sure that everything is planned. As I talk about, I want to talk about contractors. If they are ready to do their work and do their work well, but the material that they use is not standard, that will also cause a problem. Then, naturally, as we look at where we live, we have still the environmental planning of the past time. And this dilemma also is what the Wex-ontwerp has to pass. Thank you.
Councillor Lungiswanjunje, you are speaking for Ward 97 in Kailijcha. I'm glad that you're here. 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 So I'm glad that you're here.
Manjibulishe, kumaluunge parlamente, kiti kwa se kua kushe wa nje laiparlamente. Diya uvuma unka kulu bigweyo, di unika u sixty percent, forty percent i kuwetu. Ummleka kulu, sia ubuleni. Esu ubulenla kulu, ilendo bando na betuwa sa kamla kuwo, kobake tinaka kaya is kamla kuwo. Indobe ni funa kuku i kretisa, iska kulu apa, ukunikeze locate title titi. Ibu bando ifake la kuela solo, e indobe ma ukunikeze loe i title titi, banu in. Gobaba bando bayakala kulu, abana zita titi, kotoa bana minya ke minizibe khalesinfini zabo. Abanya bando ba kela izinvu, ezizinvu, ba kala kuso, abana zo i title titi zabo. Abanya ba tipefunekebe zinekeze loe izinvu zabo, zanikeze loe abanya bando. Ibi nga eske ke ukhulumende, asibonelele, kukubaniga i title titi, mutupi voa ange neti na. Ngavana kale aprofile, ani ku title titi yake, ai oshala na yentini yake. Ngobaka lokukubansima ka kuma, ukufuma na le title titi. Kabanya makasa utwe ipatalelele title titi, ukubunge na imalu ipatale. Ee enye indawen kunui beka, nga eske nibonelele i former settlement. Ngoba i wegineveki, kuya atsa ku former settlement. Abando ba kela ngapaka ati, sine mina bemibini ngoku kwa wat ninety-three, disuka kawat ninety-three. Sine mina bemibini ngoku, abando nabachela ngapaka ati zinfini. Ina esu khulumenda asibonelele zan da, uzingeka kela izinvu. Kobasitlineneka kulu, kuti kwa utainvi, ee enye zit, tungela ne ngomlini. En diya ubulenla lemina namchaje, nambe ko napaka tuwa li ndau. Umnandi ngoku Veronica Mashe, ndipuma ka wat ninety-three, etrefa vilakas branch, engus.
I am Veronica Mashe from ward ninety-three in Kailecha. Greetings to everybody present here and the members of parliament at large. I support the bill at a percentage of sixty forty. It is a very beautiful bill. I'm very grateful for this bill, because it's going to benefit our children. Our children are going to benefit from it, because it did not work for us as their parents. So what I want you to add on the bill, you should add the issuing of title deeds. There should be a clause that talks to that when the bill, the issuing of title deeds. Because many of our people own houses, but they don't have title deeds. And it's very difficult to acquire a title deed, even if they are promised to can get a title deed, they still have to pay with the money that they don't have. So I'm appealing to you that please assist us as the government to provide us with the title deeds. And furthermore, I also appeal to you to please take charge or take care of the people staying in informal settlements. The people who are staying in informal settlements become victims of fire day in, day out. If for instance, one structure starts to be on fire, that links to other structures, and many of them got on the, become the burning from the fires. And as a result, there are three funerals in this weekend for people who are victims of those fires. I'm pleading to you as members of parliament, please talk with the Department of Human Settlement to assist us as the people who are staying in informal settlement. I'm very thankful for this opportunity.
Goede dag anee allemaal, mijn naam is Veronica Mashe, ik is van vik 93 in Kailecha. Ik wil net say dat ik hier die wetzondwerp zestig percent ondersteun. Die ander veertig percent gaan o'ervoorbouwen. Maar ik denk nog steeds dat hier die wetzondwerp baie goeie een is. En ik is dankbaar daarvoor, want ons kinders zal voordeel heruitrek. Iets wat ik graag wil e, moet ingesluit word bij hier die wetzondwerp, is die kwestie o'er titel actis. Dit is moeilijk om dit te verkrijt, en baie keer moet de mensen ook betalen daarvoor. So ik zal baie dankbaar wies als dit ook na gezien kan word. Dan wil ik vraa, dat julle as a belief na die mensen in die informele nederzettings moet omzin. Helle leven onder baie moeilijke omstandigheden. Als dat brande is, dan verspreidet baie finnig in hierdie gebiede. Dus waarom ons ook drie begrafenisse hierdie werk han e van mensen wat omgekommet in brande. Baia danki.
Manjibulishe, kubando ba kula ba chele taflini, ikamalam dingo tabisa, fana, disuke Kailecha kawat ninety-four, dingo nobala pake branch, esu kokile goyo, kasango. Di umtete lo, diya wamke la umsche, kotoa ngoku nchela papansi, kundene nga se ukhauleze. Ngoba kukone zinvu pakutesa, nukokewa. Di mane ndize chonga, zina zo indan, ndidetrazutu, kupfunekebe kabo izu human settlement, azoko echa, azo chongu ba, in gaba umsebedu, ezweka kushe na. Ogu esibini enyindio enyichadela, kuku inspectors zingene, panga paka ati zinfini. Zichong ba in gaba abandachel pa, gaba nikasbe zinvu na, ngoba kona bando ba fune zinvu manyan, abanga sumenangizinvu, kubekona bando ba fumele izinvu pokchas, nje urenti sangaz. So sengasasengani natakala, koro kan, engus.
I am Chabi Safana from ward ninety-four in Kailecha. I'm the branch secretary of Sanco Branch. Greetings to the panel from parliament. I plead with you to speed up the process, because as we speak now, the houses that were provided to our people have cracks. We wish that a human settlement would take charge of those cracks and assist the people who are staying in those houses to repair the cracks. And furthermore, I want to also plead to the inspectors, people who are doing inspection, they should not just go around the house, they should get into the house and make sure that the people who are staying in the house are the rightful owners of the house or are the people to whom the houses were issued. Because many people who receive these houses, they just receive the houses to rent them out. So those are the challenges that we are faced with. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Mijn naam is Thaby Safana, ik is van vik 94 in Kailecha. Ik is die taksecretaris van Sanco in hierdie gebied. Ik wil net mijn grote oordraan in die paneel, in helle vraa om hier die proces zo finnig mondlik aan die gang te krijen en dit aftesluit. Ons die huizen wat ons het is volkrake, en ons wil graag he dat dit rechgemacht moet word. Ik wil net vraa, dat as inspecteurs die ronde doen, en helle koment inspecteurs die huizen moet helle dit binnen en bij te doen. En bij koment moet lus zeker maken, dat die mensen wat in die huizen won, dat dit die werkelijke eiernaars is. Want as baie keer dat hier die mensen die huizen wat helle het uitverheer. Maar baia danki voor die wetzondwerp.
Ina ke ne, nense bazayo, ikamalam dingo kola kama nyisane. Ndipuma ki organization, ngo Rainbow Community Organization, se Kailecha kawat eighty-nine, SIB. Rainbow Nation Community Organization. Before dia mkele pil, dia funa kuti misin tontili kala, nje ngabanda balanle, ban ga pangeliyo. There is nothing central ngaleni venue fora, bata basokoma Kailecha, neseze kuteka kulu, and de gunze manofika apa yuto i petrol, mandiluleklo ndau. I pil inte, dia isapota kulu. But, ben dit ngapamko ba le pil, iso fiken la glendau. Uhulumende bezosenzela umsekelo, ngaba sebe moshe kulu, ndivakapulu ngu, abeshebonuabili. Because, kukuzo kuzo fiken la glé pil, kubona kale imoshaka, eseyenzwengaba bebe ngapamili. Ben tueke na yokala kubo genkuku, niba panish, kwenzelba, ababa beke lo nonmteeto, ba fike sebe bonilu ba, uya lugu khulumende, ebandu na benzidwengekoi. Ogu esibini. Dia funa kwengezwenyindo kule pil, ezao forsa paaki, in da uzoku tenge materiel. Because is tena abasebe nsa yo, abesa ki zinvu, ukalamanza pumele, na uyasbon ba iso stena ez, but baia yakka inlu, inyangasimbini ipelile. And ogu kubela le pil, aiteti indo, ngabanda ba disabel. Sine challenge, yo ne da bando ge ulchese, but ses ba nikila bando ulchaya ban kwa zuwamba. Nega spinde sioza misamende, uboy ubenzelinda la, yopu menzi. So dia funa le pil, i kwa zu enforsa kubaaki, ban ga banibale taleni, abanda ba disabel, aitamarin.
I'm Kolama Nyisane, from ward eighty-nine. I'm coming from a organization called the Rainbow Nation Community Forum. I want to say all protocol observed. Rainbow Nation Community Organization. Firstly, I want to state that you disadvantaged us by bringing this hearing in this area, because it is not central. Many of us had to waste or buy lot of petrol to come here. And many of us could not even reach this area, so that's just a point that I wanted to pass. And firstly, I want to say the bill is a very beautiful and a good bill. I supported the bill. And I think you should have first made an example about those who were in charge previously. Those who caused some people to be victims of the shodi work that was done, by dealing with those who were in charge, who resulted to people lost their lives. And show them as the government what you do with those who do things the wrong way. So that those who are going to empower with this bill, or those who have to implement the bill, or make sure this particular bill is implemented, should be aware what you do, should somebody go astray or do something which is not legal. I want you to add that there should be a kind of prescribing the kind of material that need to be used by the builders. It's not good just to give them a blank check that they can go and build and not tell them what they need to use. You need to prescribe which kind of a brick, which kind of whatever, and all the kind of material that they are using. You need to tell them what kind of material that should be. And furthermore, the bill is a bit silent about the people living with disabilities. Whereas we are staying with people living with disabilities, and we have now to go out of our own way to make means for them to can get access to the houses that has been provided for them, which is a bit expensive to us. I plead with you that please have a clause that foresees the builders, that the houses that they are building should be friendly towards the people living with disability. Thank you.
Goede dag anee allemaal, en andere protocol na gekoom. Mijn naam is Krola Mayisane, en ik verteenwoordig renako organisatie. Ik is van vik negentig in Kailecha. Ik moet eerst enzee dat i ons obe achtervoet geplaatst het toe i besluitet om i vergadering in die gebied te hou. Omdat hier die gebied nie centrale is nie, en ons moet baie geld uitgeo brandstof om hieruit te kom. Ik moet bijzee dat die wetzondwerp baie goed is, en ik ondersteende. Maar ik wil bijzee dat die mensen wat huizen van zwak gehalte nie verleden gebouw, moet vastgevat en gestraf word. Die mensen wat onwettige gebouw of bouwen op onwettige manier bouw moet ook gestraf word en vastgevat word. Wat ik graag wil e is, dat in die wetzondwerp, of in i word einkoms wat angegan is, moet daar specifiek vorgescry word wat er type materiaal gebruikt moet word om die huizen te bouw. Dit moet duidelijk gestel word. Dit blijkt dat daar een leemte is in die wetzondwerp, van dit is stil o'er mensen met gestrempte. Ik wil graag he dat daar een clause sile ingestel moet word wat specifiek gaan daar o'er om huizen geskik te maken met mensen met gestrempte. Want op i oombeluk moet ons dit zelf doen, en dit en deerste moet doen. Baia danki.
Bolwen dingo mangesikembe. I'm coming from ward eighty-two. I'm the president of Africa United Social Movement Civil Rights Organization. So what we do, we offer moral support from the community. But I'm here, and we want to promote and support the bill. But there are point of concern that I would like to raise. The exclusion of people who live in informal settlements. If we are as South African government and South African citizens to promote this bill and we allow that people should live in these temporarily houses, what do we say about them? Should the houses be fit enough to leave a human being? Or we make no concern, no comments? Or we are not even concerned about those housing structures? As we know, that the same bill that was published in nineteen ninety-eight, it spoke about the structural integrity. And we had faced over the past years the problems of the structural integrity. So now the bill comes back to us and speaks about the grading system. We will face problems of the grading system, because these two concepts are very related. And if we did not address the structural integrity problem, how are we going to put faith on this bill to address the grading system problem? And also, I want to speak on the fact that there are houses in rural areas that do not meet the standards of this grading system. Where, for an example, you find the toilet is outside. And what do we say about those structures in those communities that are very different from the urban areas? Do we then disregard their living conditions, simply because they do not live in urban areas? And these are the points of concern that I wanted to make. I wanted to also thank the bill for putting forward the fund, which is called the Warrant Fund. And I hope the fund is going to put more emphasis on small businesses, and it's not going to exclude the previously disadvantaged business owners that are going to be taking part in improving and in social economic development of this bill. Thank you.
Omongesikembe ke usuka kawat eighty-two, uthieke ngu monga mele we Africa United Social Movement. Ukukala ke uya bulisukomite, uti wonake klaambutuake, banikeze lange, ndetontutuzelo, moral support ke kulu undulu, ngokupele, baia kasa ke lo mteeto uye luayo. Kotoa ke in kalabo yake, ke ngabando, abachala kui ndau, zingise majojumbeenba, lo mteeto auteti indo ngabo, ngaba utini lo mteeto ngabo, ngabifanele kilena ilje labachalanga yo, kutiini ngati siti, ngati tinasnunga kachali, kenje labachalanga, banu bachalama jojumbeen, ina eseyenama kalo, kutetewa ngai esu zakiwu, bachala kuso bonakala. Gokona kubekona bando bachala ezla lini, na bo ezakiwu zabo, ezngambe lanio, no mteeto, omiselo, umseke, nufuma namakumpia ngasese, apaku udi entini, ndidetenzalo, we kasa kwa konanenda, ba yo kumisola ke Warrant Fund, siti ngasale, Warrant Fund, deka kulu, kosoma xixi, niabasa kasa yo, uya kasa ke lo mteeto.
Goede dag anee allemaal, mijn naam is Mongesikemba. Ik is de voorsitter van de Africa United sovilo organisatie. Ik is van vik 82 in Mitchell Spleen. Wat ik hier o'er wil praat, is die uitsluiting van mensen in informele nederzettings. Wat gaan die standaarden daar wies? Hoe gaat het rechgestel word? As ons is nou in die nieuwe site Afrika, en ons gloe, dat als daar behuising geskip moet wies of gebouw moet wies, moet dit bewoonbaar wies voor allemaal. Vooral hier die mensen in die gebiede waar helle uit... Especially for the people in the areas where they are excluded. In 1998, here the wetter foreskin came and was talked about structural integrity. And this has caused a lot of problems. Now we come with the law, but it's twisted and we have to grade ourselves. And I can see that this will cause problems from both sides. So how should it be addressed? The structural integrity and also the grading system. Because there are a lot of houses, especially in the plateau land, that are not standardized here. We must have a way to address it. One of the things that is very good about here the wet zone work is here the warbird for us. And we believe, and I would very much believe, that small businesses here there will be understepped. Thank you.
I'm Nomatemba Sotomela, from Ward 74. I'm from fishing community here in Houth Bay. Greetings to members of parliament. And I support the bill as our roadmap. Under the government of the Western Cape, the government with the Clean Audit, I pleading with that government that the land should be given to the people. We should have enough space of land for our children to have, to can have playing grounds. We should have enough space to even have to fence the piece of land we have. I'm one of the committee members who are staying here from a long time when we were staying in the bushes, we were living there as a mixed community. There were no issues for being black or colored or whatever. But the Group Areas Act separated us, put us separated as much as we used to stay together. So we are very grateful to people like Mr. Chibilika, Desmond Tutu, Ellen Pusak, those who assisted us so that I was one of the first people who were offered land in this community. So I'm saying to you, move forward with this bill. But the government of Clean Audit, please give land to the people.
I'm Nomatemba Sotomela, from Ward 74, from the Fishers' Community here in Houth Bay. I grew the paneel. I will not say that I here the wet zone work ultimately understand because this is our spot card for it. I would like to pursue the reform of the government and say that ground to the people is given. We want enough ground so that it can also be played for our children. Before we have houses created, I had a large group of people in the forest. We all gathered together. There was no clear boundary there. And the people that I would like to thank here are Nelson Mandela and Desmond Tutu under other. I'm one of the first people who has a house created in this area. And I say, we must continue with here the wet zone work because I think that can do a lot of good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another 10. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six. Six, seven. I've indicated that I'm going to allow everybody who wants to speak to speak as long as you are talking about the bill. Eight. If you speak on the bill. We've got eight people, means that everybody is happy, who are closing. Happy, who are closing, who are closing. Thank you very much. The last eight people, they are who are closing. Number one.
One, two. Hello, good day, everyone. My name is Zane Barnard. I'm from Mitchell's Plain, Ward 82. I'm an ex-EFF member. You know, I just want to say that I went through the bill and I'm very, I'm highly impressed with what is stating in the bill and I do support it. I have three reasons why I support this bill and the following is this. Now, as a person that comes from the... The bill seeks to prohibit procurement of services to build a home. But this is the interesting one. Who previously failed to rectify or complete the rectification of the structure's defect. Now we have a problem in that I know that the government pays a lot of money for tendencies to build houses or to renovate office corporate buildings into residential buildings.
Sorry, sorry, but, sorry, sorry. Your voices are up, you can't hear the speaker. Please, you were given opportunity to speak and he has been very patient and listened to you. Please do the same. Proceed.
Yeah, no, like I said, I know that the government gives a lot of money to the builders, you know, to build homes or even to make corporate buildings into residential buildings. Now, because of that money, most of the companies, they use very low standard products in building that house, even the cement they use is low quality. And that is why we have the problem today of houses not standing long. After five years, it starts cracking. And I'm glad that the bill is addressing this issue about looking after people that really build houses. The second point is that the bill seeks to provide for enforcement of the provision of the bill. Now, the interesting one is this one. It also seek to provide the appointment and duties of inspectors. Now, let me tell you on that. There is no regulators that watch those people who build houses. But I hope to God, if you guys do implement inspections on those buildings or houses, you make sure that the people that does that won't be open to bribery. Because in that industry, bribery is a major, major problem. And that is why we're sitting with this problem that houses that is being built are not up to standard. And because there are no policing from the government's point of looking after the people that's building that houses. Now, the third point. Okay, the chapters seek to provide alternative dispute resolution, criminal offense and sanctions. I'm very glad that you're going to take the people that building that houses to task. Even if it means that prosecution or send them to jail, I highly appreciate that. Because we need people that the government employ to build the houses for the people to really do their job. And the overseeing of that, that the people can have quality and affordable houses. Because, I mean, you guys are giving a lot of money to those people and that really needs to buy, supporting this bill. I think it will address the needs and the problems that we're facing today. But there's also a major problem that I have. People that acquiring application forms for houses goes through a lot of, lot of red tape. I mean, from Mitchell's Plain, you go to Cape Town. Cape Town send you to national government, national government send you back to Cape Town and then they send you to Beaville, after that they send you to Mitchell's Plain. By the time people spend thousands of rands for transport, lots of time sitting in offices, they give you phone numbers, you phone the phone numbers, you don't get through. The same with the online cases. There's always a problem with online, so please just sort out that problem so that the people can walk in and walk out with a satisfied smile. Because the promises that has been put before us, please people, put it in practice, not only in words. Thank you.
Munguweni, I'm Nomatemba Sotomela, I'm from Ward 82. And I'm here to talk about the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue. I want to say that I'm not going to say anything else. I want to say that the law is not allowed. I want to say that the law is not allowed. I want to say that I'm not going to say anything else. I want to say that I'm not going to say anything else. I want to say that inspectors are not allowed. I want to say that they are not allowed. I want to say that they are not allowed. I want to say that the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue. I want to say that they are not allowed. I want to say that if the house is not allowed, it is not allowed. If the house is not allowed, it is not allowed. I want to say that I'm not going to say anything else. I want to say that I'm not going to say anything else.
My name is Zane Barnard and I'm from Mitchell's Plain, Ward 82. I'm intrigued and I understand the law. And as three reasons, I understand. I'm myself in construction and as three points that I want to speak. I know that you pay a lot of money, the state pays a lot of money on people who build houses. They use law quality material and then crack the houses. As it is, I have enough people to hold the law and to use it. The regulators, I work hard. The regulators hold the law and use their power. Because corruption is a great problem. I'm happy you're going to pay. And I know you pay a lot of money. But also, I'm sure that the people who are not able to hold, that people who receive quality houses, their work. They steer us around from Mitchell's Plain to Cape Town, back to Mitchell's Plain to Beaville. That's a lot of land they are using. We can't get out of that right person. And you can't go there if you try Beaville. Can't we see, as it is, not in step and out step by a place, a store and out step at the glim lag? And then the last thing that I want to say, as it is, we don't make any love to us. Sit down by word. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very happy and this is the first time I see a parliament. I want to say I'm 100% for the bill. 100% is the same as the people. For the bill. I want to say, I have to tell you that I'm going to ask you to stop or I'm going to kill you. I want to say, you have to see. The bill is going to do with the house. But I play in Mitchell's Plain for five years. And I can tell you precisely who can help you to build a house. The reason is that the house is not good. Because the people are five years old. That's why they are happy. That's the reason why I'm not going to help you. That's the reason why I'm not helping you. The problem is with the house. The reason why the house is bad and the people are complaining. The people are complaining that they are building a house. They are moved. They are told that they are five years old. That's why you're happy. That's why I want to say, I'm very happy with the bill. But I don't want the people to invest in the house. Because the problem with the house is that the people are happy. And because of that, many houses are being built. So it's time for the people to go to the school. They are breaking the law. But young people, who are fighting against the law, are happy. And they are happy to go to school. They are happy to go to school. And that is not the problem I want. Because it's a big problem. But I'm not happy. I want to say, they are so happy. They are happy to go to school. Because if you don't go to school, the house will see what you did. I want to say that. Thank you.
I'm Emily Paulson from Beacon Valley in Mitchell's Plain. I want to say this is the first time I see the parliament. And thank you for that.
You're supposed to speak in English.
My sincerest apology. It's late, we're tired. I'm a little bit of water. I'm Emily Paulson from Beacon Valley, Mitchell's Plain. This is the first time I see parliament face to face and I am excited, thank you for that. I'm 100% with the bill. I just want to say that I've been 35 years in Mitchell's Plain. Now, please don't be stupid and throw me out because I'm going to speak about housing. Housing is the problem. They are stuffing up everything. People are being bribed. I've been waiting a very long time for my house. But young people are 15, 16, 17, 18 years. They get houses and then they sell them. I just want to tell Kailecha, you are a huge community. You have to stand together and you have to go and do your thing. Go forth, go forward. Thank you.
Let the audience go and register there.
I'm Emily, I'm here to talk about the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue. Can you talk to her in Afrikaans?
Emily, Emily, Emily. You must go to the table, your problem will be resolved. Go directly to the table to register.
I'm Emily Paulson, from Mitchell's Plain, age 35. I want to say that I'm happy with the issue of the issue of the issue of the issue. I want to say that I'm happy with the issue of the issue. I want to say that I'm happy with the issue of the issue. I want to say that I'm happy with the issue of the issue. I want to say that I'm happy with the issue of the issue.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good afternoon, you know, of the parliament. Thank you for taking time off your schedule and to listen to our problems. Good afternoon, everybody. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you for taking time off your busy schedule and to listen to our problems. Thank you for taking time off your busy schedule and to listen to our grievances. And for me, it is about plus three years ago. My mother-in-law have rented house, like by the council, so they got the fact that they can buy the houses from the council. So that is just for senior citizens. So my mother-in-law owned the house now for four years, and now...
Oh, no, no ma.
The drains are blocking.
Sorry, Sisi, I've said those that have problems of houses, they must go and register there. I want those who speak to the bill.
Yes, I do understand.
But now you are talking about the problem.
I am just here by the summary of the provisions of the bill. So there by 2.2, it is by the repairs. So now, after the house is bought, now the drains are blocking, the windows are falling off the hinges. So which means, the council is not gonna fix it. Mother bought the house now from the council, so which means she have to pay the payment, and she is a pensioner. So she don't have that kind of money. So how does the bill fill in where they can accommodate our elderly, who bought their houses for the first time from the council, because it's now for three years. And within the three years, our drains and windows fell off and it overflowed. So she don't have the money to repair it. And the bill states here that you can repair things, but she is not by the means. And she is seventy-three years old, and she gets a pension grant, and it is stressful for her. So there is no other thing about that, because I wish that she can sell the house, and then to have all these things. Because if she can't repair the house, then how will she live in the house? And then how will she survive to live in the house? So what does the bill gonna give it towards?
But that's what I'm saying, go and register there and say you bought the house from the council, this is within the three years, and then you then register so that we can know. When we call the council, we should know which house, where, and who's the person, where does it stay, and all those. Your details, we will need those details there.
Okay then, thank you. Thank you, like I said.
Ik am alam ngus Vachmida Vries, ndinengati kakuulu, oma ma wamke watenga izu, ku tayaba ku council for three, ngo kuleinzu iyatilika. Ingabake ngo kulepil msaambi, izama ukumneta njaniyo, na kubaga lokusina yo ne gate, ne festival, ezepuka yo njalo njalo. Kwayeke unemi nyaka is seventy-three years, ukomeke ke kisboneloska chulume nde ekui grant. Utke ekhla itheba u sisilo wat kusaloma kame, kubale ngati ndokwenza ne skalazo, aypetisiskalazo sake paya kumakosa angono pala be parlamente, engos.
My name is Vachmida Vries, ek is from Mitchells Plain. Ek wil nee say, ek het mei buisen goodbelem gelig, ek is verwijsom te gadi ri voortzitter on by ri, da gaan registreer daar. Ek wil nee say, bij point 2.2 van die wetsu entwerp. As die hais gebouw is, en ek koop die hais bij die raad, en as her stelwerk wat moet gedoen word, ons draaiende is geblok, ons venters fal uit, na moet ek betal. Maar ma is driedzventig jaar oud, sae het die financiële vermoeins om haar aai hais recht te maak nie. Sekere die bekostig nie, wat ma kun snaw, ek point 2.2 vagon her stelwerk in. Dankie.
Mollweni, ti abulisasaloo ne members of the parliament, ngo kundolapa ngapakati. Ik am alam, tu ngubangi le wawa tu kutese, ti suga Kailecha kawatna in di tri. Also, ti suga wi NGO en Masipatisane Soup Kitchen, ti kua kokele na wi neba utwachi. Ndiya wamkeela, yomtecho obe kwa pa mmshe. Ndiya wamkeela, koto agendine ndo eti, ndiya kela ngo kaulizleyo, ezabkonraki bez kashiwe, uko ba ma za kela bandu, zu xie yomsebenzi zinga uki ba ngasa baleka, sa basia bandu bezengaki. Yomsekele walonto pakume watin, unabasali ababe kelwe ngumistee opra nguchon, izinzu was xia, zinga plasteruanga, zinga kozu festival, na ngo kun tetana ova basali. Basale na dalunga, kitinko keli zo ksalaa, zange nelela zalitatu klanu fazumkange luchon, agafumaniki. Ti tilondo ma itatu note, ba kuseko lunga ke paye watin. Obesibini, ngelklayesalika Honorable Minister Matigizela, ku ye kwa kiwa u phase one and phase two. U phase two akpeyijwa, kotoa utekutwe ini i box zombane azabu iselua ngapakati na ngo, kusekuzinzu, kusajigi pogis ngapantle. So ku kolo lunga ke koyo endi kela indoba ibe kujela yo klandelela. And waati befrika ababaza osebenzi sake lomtecho, zibe ezzinzo zixake ngasemwa, silandelela. Koko kibela, ndiya ngunela na nabantu abata basuke Kailecha, ngaskele session ke ni tate, nipinde ke niye Kailecha, na lepil kwa ba bandu ke ngo kusiteta ngabo, ba kuleinzu, engos.
My name is Bongile Tukutezi. I am coming from Kailecha in ward 93, and I also want to say that all protocol observed. As I said that I'm coming to Kailecha from Kailecha in ward 93, and I also represent an NGO called Masipatisane Soup Kitchen, and also I'm coming from the Nebarwood ward. I want to put to you, Che, that there was a subcontractor that did not finish its work, and as a result, there was a certain Mr. John, who was in charge of this subcontractor, who left the houses unplastered, and the windows were cracking as well. Also, Honorable Matigizela, a former minister of housing, did try and build a project whereby phase one and two was also not completed, and the electric boxes were not installed. We want a follow-up on that. And lastly, as this was mentioned by my fellow people from Kailecha, we want this session also to be brought in Kailecha so that there can be public participation on that side. I thank you.
My name is Bongile Tukutezi, van ward 93 Kailecha. Ek wil nee say, all the protocol word gevolg. Ek verteen worret i sopkombais as ook i gemeen, i buurdwaag. Vorige meneer John is a contracteer, het hais gebouw, maar die venters kraak. En ik wil nee ook nee say, die vorige minister van buisen, ma di, ma di gedesa is nie befoog nie volg as e blif, die werk op. Bydanki.
Mollweni, ti abulisakubashali ngapambili, na kubashali bebonke ngo kunchali. Zindatu izindwen ti funa je uba zivele, apika malamdo nguvukile, kritabatwa. Zindatu, koka la ndiya ivuma ipila. Ngoba ke yomtecho kakate, kusala uchinzu, aylo si kwe, is tetes ya chinzu. Kaa kutekwa bonakala, pufu ba sikonisindwen kwa lelisayo. Eyo kala ke mnage nfunu ifelela, apa eyiway, eyhotbay, le ward 74. Si kesano mlilo, ko 2017. Ek waati kagulungiswalona ke kwa tuama ibe is super blocking, kwenze luguti, ze ingapindi be kolengaki. Yaati human settlement ibeka i thirty million. Watunationali mkeenga oma mutelilaka upinde uti times, kulete ti ibe i sixty, ze mnandingu national, dengese anye i sixty, icho ibe i one twenty, kwenze wegele super blocking. Kwa bonakala ke umshaba ngin, wea wautenga ku mama umshaba onga peshe ya kueto, kutoa ilove and pool, ifama. Waba kela na banya belunge bezengakkueto, uko atenge ezasinzu sabo, kwenze la ispace. Ndoleye sabo nasikajana ngo mbotowa ye pansikwa yo, na ye wasusu. Indo ezibona yo ngo ku la fama, ya itenge loferu kokiwa izinzu, kulinyua ifech, asi asu banjani. So i council ekoyo apa itionna, asi kwa asu basi ngabanga bamnyam, sizo kwa la inda wonge indaw, apa eyhotbay. No ba kuwi ndu, ni fanba sipai nde, pay eyiway, sitrinane, pay eyiway. So kani snet ekala, ngalonto, uba ni samu, uko tilamshaba, ubuyele ebantwi. Si asu, uko ti kwenze wantu ngo ba, ne developing, ne ise ikubeka kula fama. Si pindi, ngo koko kuesbini, ndize kule ndau sikui, ku kit developing ya kala ngo 24. Is draato si kriji, i milo ngo kaika ti win daaw. Dino lo igoke ngo kumnandi, yaasi tinasi ngabantu, silinda silinde sitiinu, siza utesio ngena ngo kusoka macho kyo mbepa. Asi asu ipati epetewa, ili ndiye mtlam, kusondo le iklasa le foti, iso kangasa ngayo na la developing. Kotoa tinasi tinginda wongu. Ogo kibela, tau kela na le i umba ze nuchon, si zintalo zimbi ni apa. Kuko abantu abazengo, koko ksebenza. Kuko abantu ababange be mi apa. So when it comes ba sithota izinzo zo boba, si ngabe mi. Ababazengo msebenzi, bayas panza mis. Ngoba bonabe yaasi future yaabo, ngapakati kubezintzwe, ayiko apa, ise easten cape. So siya kela ba uchulume nde weto, si ngade, si bamba ne sotwa si ngabantu bamnyam, agasi sombulalele lena. Koba tinabantu bangaba da pa ngo, si fumanan insokol. Koba nezinzu ezizingu, mnaninabantu aan, abanga makwe ngo kabata la, funeke nbelusi. Za belusela apie etoti, ba zo ksalaa abantwi en ba be milek. So klasa thota ya ezozinzo, sifika sbe zintambe zimbi. Koba ababa pume easten cape, bati siza wenzanjani ama si kwe te ropie, abana znyanya zila apa. Zibe tineze etu znyanya, zigule ndau sikui, so kani sombulalele na payan, engos.
Greetings. Omshaka, we yakrelba wee paya, Daphilin. My name is Vukile Kritabatwa, I stand here to support the bill.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I can hear your voices, please, can we reduce your voices? We have requested that those who wants to speak to one another, please go outside, and then you'll speak outside, and then you can come back later. We want to hear the speakers, please, who are pleading with you. Thank you.
My name is Vukile Kritabatwa, I stand here to support the bill. I am coming from ward 74 in eyiway, here in Hotbay. I want to speak to the issue that there was a land that was bought for thirty million, but we asked the minister nationally, Honorable Delile, to give us, like to allocate us more money so that we can have more land. Also, I want to speak to the issue that the council here doesn't want us to stay in certain areas, whereas there is a land that we can stay on. In 2014, there was an area whereby there was a development, and the streets were completed, but now they are refusing us spaces now to occupy those spaces. And lastly, I want to speak to the issue that there were two groups here in Hotbay. There are those who are coming from eastern cape for work purposes, and there are those locals who were born here. Now, we don't have space to do our rituals, because our children, we were born here. We do want them to send them to circumcising schools and so on, but now these people are coming from eastern cape, are refusing us spaces as locals. So we do have that complaint as well, but in a nutshell, I support the bill.
Goeedagani, my name is Vukile Kritabatwa. Ik is van ward 84, and name is Amayetu. And ek wokragi paneel grot, and say that ek jelhardag heer di wetsu entwerp understeen. Da was blikbaar gron gekoop voor dertig miljoen rand voor unvikeling, maar ons het minister de Lul gefraa om nog geld te gees so that ons nog gron kan koop om haisen, meer haisen te kan bouw voor die menso wat hier won. In 2014 was daal unvikeling, waar die straten vultwe was, maar niemand voor toege laat om daar te gaan bouw of om die perseel in te neem nie. Op die omblik sit ons in die gebied waar ek won met twee groepen, diegene van die OSKAP en die wat plaslik geboren is, en dit lijkt als of daar een probleem is om genoeg plek op gron te hee om ons rituelis uit te kan voer. Maar ek understeen heer di wetsu entwerp, bydankie.
Goeed madag, amal, ik is Wilma Papier, van oot uit die Po, Salauris Pass, in hi Aldenberg. Ik praat as a community activist, ik support the bill hundred percent, but there's a few issues, and that is the public participation. Was is totally uitge laat door het komer die bouw, was het ma vandaag ik osinwa organe. And then ook insurance after na area is a oorgege is. Umdat was in a area fly wat baye nasunale disaster zet, susboma falopi is, insalkiti peva gutes. En os menso kan atiba kosakuma yaaisa rechte maaki. And then, oke, last thing na is, the minute, minute who's going to monitor the process that the bill is going to be implemented in all areas, and not only certain areas. Thank you.
G'day to the panel, my name is Wilma Papier, I'm from ward 84 in Salauris Pass. I just want to say that I'm a community activist, and I support this bill. One thing that I am not completely happy about is the whole public participation that has taken place because we have not been included. The other problem that I would like to speak about is about insurance. The area where I live, there are many disasters that occur. Like trees falling on houses, and the houses are damaged, and we can't afford to fix these houses, so the insurance, whether we have or not, if we have, is very expensive. I just would like to ask a question, and the question is, when this bill is being introduced fully, who will monitor the process? I would like it to be monitored very closely. Thank you.
Mollweni, salo nani basali, kamalam ngus velnapapier, ti suga ward 84, Salauris Pass, ndimi apa ke ndi ikhassa lepil oka ni lo yomtecho sa iluayo, mnage ndi lichatli zio la basali, ndi milea amalungu loa basali. Kora ke salo lenkubo yenzeke na msaanze, yo fakaliso zinvozo lundo, andyonwa belanga koko ekongo, kuba abanya beitu, kange basi, zoka ni kange ba kuwo kwe kule nkubo. Elinya inga kusalo, kungu insurance. Ki nda wesala kuoso, sine zinzu ezteso nakala. Apo sala konas, funukona, ndoba na ke mtsami, ngaba ikona na insurance, mtsami ezze zinzo na kwa asu snet, kusini na. Kwa konake, si salo, ta lepil, se yenzwé yomtecho ya pasiswa. Ingabake ngo banozo, beka eswini, na sithenseki isee indoba, iya punyeso ngo kpeleleyo, engos.
Bayete! Bayete! Ki na kosi, ma piele, mu kweni, mo tye mu holo. Yes. Ki zwak Kailecha, ward 97. Ki nda chepesini ya Kailecha Traditional Chiefs Local Council in Kailecha. Ki batla udumelisa, baslo mpie, bazwa ngparlament. Ki dumelise, si chabaka feela, patu bat, lilin, utlamun.
Kidumelise sichabaka au feela wat obadlili eh utlamun eh bariki imbizo. Eh taba pile na, kiemimun. Hakidumelani li pil i itlili parlament de ho ha, kiayana. Goba ning, ibima holo eh hudi small business eh kapadi local business. Goba na kitze akishaba, kabona ori, parlament de itlili keto mona, hara sichabasalu. Hayari amohanya ho ha, runa jualoka community, pili ubeteng keto. Juali eh reatiba ori, kambani li kambani, kalamile ibe compliance. Impa he, hubima uyetzalwa, goba ning, kitlayza mtsalaka NHPRC. Kineki keta ubuwalime abi leta fulaman kant, eh atwa ngo NHPRC. Karikikopa ansalu seze ori eh, how ba la urista ra uyetzalwa, impa hutwi. Obatla uristare online, and obatla riti behe, jualoka sichaba, se saba tubaban tu. Hubima hu, uyetzadi intoze, utlamila horiridietze computing, especially into osa ditzebe, ibile utlatso la pile ube uristara online. Eh kitze haki balachelete, obatla angore uinze, how uyetzaregistrating for NHPRC? It's close to two thousand rand. Reatiba he ori, di kambani tena da di registare siwe, uci IPC, impa hubima of manam sibits. Goba obatla ubeteng intoze twana dibo koida CIDB vendor number and now this um NHPRC. Kaufelan intoze, adidin, asidin intoze bu no loori, okachona udiye. Especially, how, how, how ten motwa takhona utu. Juali na he, I plead to this honorable parliament that if the government uh can give the business, the small businesses, that they the chance or the people who will be able to assist our businesses out there. By doing so, it will be easy as the government to know how many companies to each and every ward, how many companies are there in that particular ward? And how many um companies that are registered? How many companies are being in compliance? So that, I don't think if the government will follow that, it will give any uh any difficulties. The other thing is um, they are, unali, unali into twingi di business forums. Banali data, banali database ya bo. If rekachona of mana, eh libaki training session, eten, kapahutwi eh, bateng batuba parlament, kapabatuba government officials, batla fita, batlo tusaka ofela kambani, ebatalankapa kambani, eshotanka registration eten, libaki fin, isin only especially NHPRC. Because na kibona ekari wa yinana tzatilena, eh retro advertiser NHPRC only. Goba mona ribuaka NHPRC most of the time. But we forgot on the other hand that there's other registrations that we need to obtain as small businesses. So tzatilena kiaku pa ori, huba parlament de in, kikopa eh, parlament de in, riskan kate to tzatilena, ike itama ye, ietele liman kailicha. Mo utlabating sichabaka au feela li ti, limo, ritlochona utso la pile, kau kate to ya ru. Eh za utete, kikopa mema kaufela di kosi li di kosa, temona Western Cape province. Kadi twelve, za hudi, ritlaberinali, ritlaberietza uh Western Cape council. So ribata kaufela di chief, samona Western Cape um province. Ba, bayema ne kailicha training center, kadi twelve, katen, kailicha training center. Ten o'clock in the morning, from ten in the morning. Kalibito lama kosi li di kosa na, kialibo holo, sichabaka au feela, li uluna baslo mpie ba ru, kialibo.
Uh my name is Mapiele Mukwena, from the traditional council in Kailicha. Uh greetings to all today. I stand here not to support uh this bill today because the conditions are difficult uh for us as the local business. And then uh there are many companies that are struggling and yet they are supposed or they must comply with the registration. And that particular registration is also difficult because one can only register online, you can't register anywhere and most of us are not familiar with these online registrations. And the registration is also too expensive as it is amounting close to two, two thousand rand, which is difficult for most companies to raise. Also, even if the companies are registered, it is difficult for the local companies to get jobs from, from the government. So there are also some business forums that are having the database. Is for of registering online. So at the present moment, I appeal to parliament not to take any decisions now, but uh to give yourself time maybe to, to visit Kailicha for further discussions where you will be able to meet uh the entire community. Uh lastly, I would like to invite all the chiefs around the Western Cape for a traditional council meeting that will be held in Kailicha on the twelfth of November at ten o'clock, thank you.
G'day to you all, my name is Chief Mukwena. Jammer, goya dagani allmal, ek is wofman Mukwena, van vikk seven ninety, in Kailicha. Ek wirti envoerde di plaslikarad van di Kailicha tradisionele wofmane. Ek will net erstin say that ek ni diwetsonwerb onarsteen ni. And ek zalise warum. Omtandage eda is baye moelik verklingzako onernemings. And now mittleren nogi registrasi foey betal, wat baye deer is, and then can ditook net anline gedun woer. And baye mensen sikul om danga anline te dun, alis ni bekwa om dit te dun ni. Di registrasi foey is redlik deer, wan dit belop edwa swes plus minus two thousand rand. And dit is nogal baye moelik om te bekom verklingzako onernemings. Di plaslikamatkipai is sek sikul baye om werke kryi vani regerin. Ek weet da dar sekere uh gebide wa dar mensen is wat de databases wol skip for plaslikamatkipai wat e redliko goye idea is. Ek will graha parlament fra om ni nou a besleit te maak or heer diwetsonwerb todat hile di mensen van Kailicha besokek and or leggeplegek medi gemeenskap dar ni. Ek will ook net say that all di tradisionele leers, tradisionele leers uitgenwe woer na abe einkoms obi twelfte November, bayadanki.
Thank you very much.
Is closer? Yeah.
Okay, eh molweni nonke, ekamalam no gumapile Mukwena, disuka pakwa traditional council ya se Kailicha, wa yake ndime apa andi khas de pil. Wakona, ukupalisela NHPRC, ubiza imaliz, kulu ngakulu, kanga, ndoba fne kupatal imaliz pakwa two thousand. Ogo spini ke eh kukoi business forum, ine data, ine business forum ine database for in kambani zalapakaya, iafuna gena yu khas wakakulu. Ya bongo osa ke ndipe na kupalamede noba lenkubo yale pil, inga ikahulezi si ipumeze. Ki afne ko kubeku ingo, tokuyo napai Kailicha, kufiwe izinboza bantu balanda. Ogo kubela ke ndime ma zone in kosi, zone tonyama, es lapay Western Cape, uzobe, ho intlangani so yepunga, yetraditional council pay Kailicha, iso be ingomtsaka twelft November, itala ngenzimbe shumi, engos.
Thank you very much um for the inputs. We want to um, thank you for interacting with the parliament of the Republic of South Africa. Um we want to um assure you that your input will be considered as we are going to deliberate on the bill.
Engosika kulu ngue kalyolole no, utatenga kibaglen kubue se parlament eh, si funa kunseki sukuti, ikalyolole no, liza uteli, kualase lo kakuulu, ile komi tikailanga ne, iko kai parlament.
Um I, I want to apologize to our translator, we've given her task to translate and I want, she wanted to make input and I've closed the discussion and I said he must go there and register his points.
Ni funa ukoli sa ke kutoli kobe smambele apa, gelkoshas sali ndile, be funa ukwezi kalyoloko danmkele makapa le ipaya Daphylin.
Because when you chair the meeting, you are able to read the tiredness of your constituency.
Goba ke ka usu uongamele intlangani so, uyakwazu kufunda ukuti noa kua bantu abala poklo intlangani so.
Um there are certain things that would respond to which are part of the law that we are utilizing now.
Zikona indawe tele, exa upendu loa ezin ngale ye, ya lenkubo kesi pete, kanyelo mtehto su pete ngo.
And there are those that, as you have made input, they need further discussion with the bills, because they are part of the bill, the changing in the bill.
Kube koezo, i bisu bestezanike, zelo apa, ezin ngale ye yomtehtolo su pete yoi pilena, ezin ngale ye yango, ya olomtehto su pete.
There are few things that will clarify. We have a gentleman from NHPRC, which is called as a Kiel Mchlongo.
Si no, indawe zimbalo, esas, esas, analogiko, some nomza nomchlongo, ovelo k NHPRC, oh, so funeke, ek, akakisazona apa.
He will focus on issues that you have raised on the bill to further clarify them.
Oza ukri la ke kuisi ndo entenas kapazela, es nokwenza ne pilena, oza sakakisa ke ngokteka balal.
And majority of you, you have raised the issue of the NHPRC which is not accessible.
Abanyebetu apa klen intlangani so, ba pakamise indawe, yoba ke NHPRC ai fikilili ke.
And the last speaker raised the issue of the funds, the payment that they pay to register.
Engosile, yobe yu kubel uteta, ukakamise umba ke, wen chaulo, ek funeke, ilchaulo ngabantu kabe yu palis.
And then we'll have Mr. Pizosulolo from the Department of Human Settlement.
Eh si pindi, smenomza nu pita sloto, uzobe teta ke kui, sebele, etetel, sebele zo, chalso kulu into human settlement.
Mr. Pizosulolo will clarify issues on the bill, um on the issues that we have raised which relate to the drafting, because they were the ones that were drafting the bill.
Yenakom nomza nu Pizosulolo, ozo uteta ke miba, ete ya nyatela, emalungake, nukui iloake, kua olomtehto si somel.
And then we, there was an issue which is important that I must, I must respond to on the people who are being on the waiting list for the long time.
Kube koe umbawa ba into, yoba pakanyeso, ababa gwen listi, ituba ili, ek ba to koko, kobe selistin.
Um we have in, we are members of parliament, we are not taking decision, we monitor and play oversight on the department.
Ukupenda lunda, undi funa kui konisa, yoba ukala tinas lapan, isngamalunge parlament de, ai si ti, abata ta si kibo, indwe sienza, utina kukumonitarisha, ukuti ke, abantu abenzumsumsumsumtila, ba wenzelile fanele klayona.
But this issue that of beneficial list that keeping on changing, some disappear, some people waiting for more than twenty years was discussed by the members of parliament with the Minister of Human Settlement.
Kotwa ke lumba ke woku yelisti ende, abanpa beselisti, nimi nyake mininzi, abanye, mja, kubelika malakel selisti, nabone si susiwe, labeko kuyindaw, zone, ezo ngakes, nokwenza nelilisti, zigesa kokpa kenyamalunge parlament de, ate abiza nompati so, ue sebele zo kralso kulu into human settlement, kuatehtwa ke ngalondo.
And the minister had made commitment, besides waiting for the passing of the bill, what he has, what is doing from her offices that they are digitizing the beneficial list?
Nmpatiswa ke, uyewenza, ismo pele, lo, commitment, yobe ke, gelkoshayona ipilisamba, in kubuya yo, inga kapuniyo zo anje, uzobe, ilande la yonale yelist. Ilisting uku ya bantu, yesa ufakwa kui digital, funeke, ingene, kui computer ezobe, ingulume ekala, eofissiniaki.
Which means that when your house is been approved, nobody will then be able to remove you from the list.
Indwe shukuti ke, nobu palisa, pi ufakwa yelisti, niklonda, ukoyo, uzobe, lonngalo, ifela, eofissiniaki, nmpatiswa, ka utewa puniyo zo, ukuti uyapruva for, fumanidu, akomdu nulsusika, malakok, bage, eofissi nmpatiswa, uzobe, ibona yungide kobe kayo, kuisistim.
Because the beneficiary list are drawn by ward councillors and ward committees in some instances.
Goba ke kwezinyeme, koke, i beneficiary list is ipaloa ke, go ward councillor, ne ward committees, kwezinyindaw.
And when their term of office is ended, the new councillor starts his own list, he doesn't actually pick up those lists that was drawn by the previous councillors. that was drawn by the previous councillors.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
And in the process of writing the new list, other names disappeared on the list.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
So the new system, as you punch it, in the system, therefore it will register to national and even to ourselves as members of parliament. Nobody will remove the list on the database.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament. We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
Therefore, we would then be able, as parliament, if anybody comes to us, will then says to her, "Where is your receipt?" Because when you apply for a house, the system actually give you... Can you put that down, your hands? Because if I'm speaking, you are raising hands. I become confused. Okay. I'm responding to the issue of the beneficiary list.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
So the minister has actually made commitment to parliament that is going to digitize the list, which actually will then reflect on the system of government from local municipalities to national government.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
And as the portfolio committee, we added to the minister's input and says that we would want you to make sure that councillors, as they draw the list, there must be a council resolution with those lists, so that the names should not disappear in the process.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
And secondly, we then said that, because there is in the process, as we interacted with community, who have realized that there are old people, people with disabilities, childhooded families, who are queuing on the beneficiary list. And we have agreed with the minister, with the provincial department, that those categories of people will be prioritized on the beneficiary list. So I wanted to clarify the issue of the beneficiary list. I will now invite the NHPRC to come and explain further on the issues that you have raised, to emphasize on what they are supposed to do from here.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
Greetings to honorable members. Let me first greet the Chairperson and the Community at large. Thank you for the opportunity.
We have a question about Kaialicha, the parliament.
I would request Mr. Johnson to join me on the stage, so that you can able to know him. He will be able to answer certain issues which has been raised here. Johnson, he is just here.
We have a question about Johnson.
Chairperson, NHPRC does have offices in Western Cape?
We have a question about Johnson.
As NHPRC, we welcome the bill, because we are the implementer. Sort of, we are going to make sure that the objective of the act of the bill is carried out.
We have a question about Johnson.
Chairperson, we do want to highlight to the members of the public that it is very important that they must make sure they employ builders which are registered with the NHPRC.
We have a question about Johnson.
And that's the only way you can able to enjoy the benefit of the warranty fund, which most of you, you want to know how you can benefit out there.
We have a question about Johnson.
If you get a builder who is not registered with NHPRC and the home which is building is not enrolled, you are not going to benefit from the warranty fund.
We have a question about Johnson.
The NHPRC does have a committee, which is a disciplinary committee of all home builders who are registered with the NHPRC, for any misconduct which are caused when they are building the home. So that is very important to take note of that.
We have a question about Johnson.
And again, we do have home inspectors all over the country. We also have one in this area.
We have a question about Johnson.
So if you don't see the inspectors of the NHPRC and you realize that there are builders who are building without registered, that maybe the builder is using a material which are not accredited, please, we do have a fraud hotline, which you can report to us anonymously, and then we will able to take steps against the builder as well as the home inspectors. So in order to respect the Chairperson's time, I'll lend over to my Mr. Johnson, who is going to introduce himself, so that you can able to deal with the issue of accessibility and the issue of registering. Some of you talk about the payments, which are very high. So Mr. Stevens, not to waste time of the Chairperson, just highlight those issues. Thank you very much.
We have a question about Johnson.
Honorable Chairperson, honorable members of the portfolio committee, thank you very much.
Can you talk to the mic? I can't hear you.
His concern about the time.
Malo, fellow with housing portfolio committee, with due respect, not undermining your office, but I'm saying, I think your office is a little bit unfair to some of us. At any checkpoint, if we can go to aid, this is good. Now, I don't understand why we have to wait. And as the Chairperson, we have a question about Johnson. Now, Mr. Justin, another platform. Explain, are you justice, Justin? Or explain it. Then this is out. I have a point disagree. I think it's too much for us. If you can postpone or relieve us, relieve us. We have a question about Johnson. And go.
Thank you for your intervention. But the issue is that you said you are not able to access NHPRC. And I've brought them here, so that they can tell you where to access them. So if you are saying it's fine, you don't need them, they can sit down, because they can sit down. Those that wants to speak to them, they've got their table outside. Therefore, you can then go and interact with them. But I'm not going to allow hands that people are raising, because majority of you, you are saying... No, no, majority of you, you are saying that you are tired. And then we want to release you. But those that are at the door, if people wants to go out, allow them, but they must know that they will not come back in. So that we are clear, because they want to control the process. So if you want to go out, and we have never refused anybody to go out, that should be very clear. So those that wants to go out, and they can go, but they will not be allowed to come in. So as we finalize the program. So thank you very much, NHPRC. They are saying that they will go to your table and then get more information. And thank you very much. With that note, because I don't want this meeting to be disrupted because people will be late. So I want somebody from yourselves to come forward and close this meeting with a prayer. And thank you very much for coming to this public hearing. Can we get somebody to come and close?
Gadas Parkamen.
Can we ask men to remove their heads as we close the meeting?
Father in the name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord, we thank you, Jesus, in this journey, for it's a long journey from 8 o'clock in the morning. Bless us when you go out.
Thank you very much. You are requested to sit down, those that wants to have lunch. You will be controlled to... Sorry, can we listen to one another? Sorry, sorry. There are teams from parliament which will come to you and direct you where you must go to get your lunch. You don't have to queue, all of you. They will come to you and take you to the relevant place. Thank you very much.
Give a number, just take a number.
Thank you.